Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to council this morning. I will call the meeting to order at 9:01 a.m. And I'll start by acknowledging that we are gathered on Treaty Six lands, a part of the many traditional territories of the First Nations, Métis, and Inuit in Alberta. The town of Drayton Valley is grateful for the knowledge keepers and elders and the stories and teachings that they share of these lands and its people. I will now ask everybody to stand for the singing of our national anthem this morning.
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons come and with glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land, warriors and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Are there any additions to the agenda this morning?
Administration has one addition to the agenda under nine, so as 9.6, we have an addition, the Drayton Valley Electronic Sign Proposal.
Okay, so 9.6, Electronic Sign Proposal. Did you get that, Pam? And then there's just a little handout here for council. Ms. Terry will be presenting for 9.6. Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the agenda with the addition of 9.6, the Electronic Sign Proposal? Councilor Comanna, thank you very much for that. All in favor? That is carried. Any corrections or amendments to the September 6, 2023 regular meeting of council minutes? Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the September 6, 2023? Thank you very much. Councilor Evans, all in favor? That is carried. And we have no proclamations this morning. Same with public hearings this morning. We do have several delegations, and our first delegation up is 7.1, the RCMP stats. And I don't believe that our RCMP Staff Sergeant Raditz is here this morning, so we'll move along on the agenda and we'll circle back around once he comes and joins us. We will go to 7.2. 7.2 is a very special delegation, just like all of our delegations, and it's to recognize members of our community that stand out. And council just wants to be able to recognize their commitments and their spirits and their dedication that they give to our community. And today's recipient of this is Diane Nikoforic, and we want to welcome her to the council chambers. And we want to thank her for being a longtime community member, together with her husband, Ron, enjoying an active retirement filled with compassion for the people in the community. So thank you for joining us this morning. Diane has been a registered nurse for an impressive period of over 42 years, starting back in 1973 after her studies took place at the University of Calgary and the Winnipeg General Hospital. And then she made her way to the town of Drayton Valley. So thank you very much for coming to our community. During her long career, there was a deep connection with motherhood and mums. She was involved with the Breastfeeding Committee for Canada and the Alberta Breastfeeding Committee. She has been a strong drive to support mums and their journey in life and in parenthood. Not only taking care of physical health needs, but also mental health support is equally important to Diane, and this shows her actions and connections with numerous organizations in our community, such as the Pembina Crisis Connection Society, Grow Eat Together, which is the food security here in Drayton Valley, Warming Heart Center, the New Daytime Shelter, and most important affiliation and participation in the United Church and its board. An active member and a known non-sent stance is her way of doing the right thing for every person that you come in contact with and your personal journey here. Her love for nature brought other initiatives to life here in Drayton Valley that we can see and experience throughout our community. As a leader with the Canadian Girls in Training, the Peace Park Initiative in the north side of town was realized, volunteering during the Committees in Bloom campaigns, being one of the judges and raising the beautification factor here in Drayton Valley, being part of the garden tours. You were sharing knowledge and seedlings with other garden enthusiasts throughout the community. We see you at many functions throughout our community, such as cultural, library events, performances, social gatherings, and things like this. You bring such life into our community at its fullest. We want to thank you for everything that you've done in our community, the many years that you've dedicated to the family, to the friends, to everyone. And on behalf of council, I would like to thank you personally, and we'd like to recognize your commitment and your community spirit that will surely display for many years to come. So thank you very much. We ask that you come on down, and we'd love to get a little picture with you and recognize you. (Singing) It's all about the uniforms. (Singing) Wonderful me. Oh. (Singing) One. Thank you very much. We have our ways for you. (Singing) City, I'm not gonna tell me a few words. (Singing) Thank you so much. (Singing) One small fraction per minute. (Singing) Graduating from the Western General in 1970. (Singing) If you look at my face, I'm glad I didn't happen. (Singing) A little warmer there. (Singing) Oh, well, thank you very much. To you. It's always a pleasure recognizing the people in our community that do so much and give their time and support, and it's just one of those special moments that we've added to council to make sure that we're recognizing and highlighting. And for those of you that are joining us today, if you know of somebody special that stands out or that you'd like to recognize, you know, please send their names our way too. And this is just a little section of our council meeting that we take that little bit of time. So it's a great way to, I think, to start our council meeting for sure. We will circle back now. I see that Staff Sergeant Raditz is here, so we'll go back to 7.1, and we'll talk about our RCMP stats. So if you want to come on down to the podium, that would be great. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
So we have our August update here for the stats, starting on what you have up there. You can see at the start here from showing January to August. It's showing green. Yeah, we're good? Okay, sorry. Starting with January to August, we're seeing everything's continuing to trend down. So our year-to-date, our break-and-enter, theft of motor vehicles and our theft under have all decreased, which is good. And then when we take it back to August alone, some of the nice things we're seeing here are there was only four thefts of vehicles in August, which is a big change from what we've seen traditionally in Drayton Valley. We're still seeing break and enters, and we still are seeing a lot of the theft under. And a lot of it can be attributed to our stats keeping, and there's very little distinction made whether, you know, somebody picked up a bag of bottles off of somebody else's deck and it was reported, or it is a genuine theft. Not that that's not a theft, but something a little more substantial. So a lot of that is our people that are living on our fringe are still, you know, they're trying to make their way, and they account for a lot of that. If we go over to the next sheet, it's just a graphic representation basically of the same thing. And what I'd like to draw the mayor and council, what their attention to, is you see, everything is continuing to drop. We're moving in the right direction. And there'd been a question at our previous council meeting about how we're comparing to other municipalities. And if you flip to the other, the next slide, so this is all of the Western Alberta District municipalities. So it's comparing apples to apples, and as you can see, most of them are trending up a little bit more. So Drayton Valley is definitely moving the right direction compared to the other municipalities of similar size in Western Alberta District. We are doing fairly well and holding our own. And then as far as a update here, in early Aug-- or it was mid-August, the Drayton Valley membership coordinated with the Red Deer RCMP. They were assisted by our local covert units or GIS driving covert vehicles. Edmonton Alert assisted, as well as the Drayton Valley General Duty members and the Police Dog Service. They all coordinated together to locate and follow a stolen vehicle out of Red Deer. It wasn't a pursuit, but it was a covert follow. The vehicle ended up, tire deflation device was deployed, two subjects fled on foot, and were later, through the coordination of containment and the use of the Police Dog Service, two adults were taken into custody. So that was, really showed the growth within the RCMP, the involvement of our Real-Time Operations Center and just multiple units coordinating, and the local knowledge of our, our membership here in Drayton Valley to bring that to a safe and successful conclusion. We, this month, or in August, we had an experienced member, a four-year member, Constable Tyler Reeves, come to us from Peace River. He was filling our one vacant position. He is now in place and has been working for the last couple of weeks and is really fitting in well and coming to know Drayton Valley in the area, a very good fit for the detachment. We are losing Constable Kootu at the end of this month, and we, there has been an experienced member from Saskatchewan identified as interested in coming. Drayton Valley is starting to earn the reputation of a place members are looking to transfer to, so she will likely be transferring in as soon as she sells her house, coming from Saskatchewan. I've been in contact with our staffing. As we're going to be losing Constable Kadu Ebacker, who's very well-known within the community, has been here a long time and done a lot of great work for Drayton Valley, we'll be losing him to the Lower Mainland Police Dog Service. And staffing is currently working to locate a suitable replacement to fill that vacancy. As many of you know, Mike has worked within the GIS units, so our plan within the detachment is we'll be filling that GIS position internally, taking somebody that's earned their way within the Drayton Valley detachment to give the plainclothes unit a try under the supervision of Corporal Turner, and then the new member we get will be filling a hole on the floor with a, from a uniform position. We've seen through August and really through all of summer, our prisoner numbers have steadily been rising. We've had the discussion within the detachment. We're not sure why that is. Our charges seem about level, but we are definitely bringing more people back to the Drayton Valley cells and seeing more of them being transported to the Edmonton Remand Center. So whether this is a blip or just some residual from the fire, we're not sure why, but our prisoner numbers are definitely going to be up for 2023. There's been a change in the Western Alberta District management within the RCMP. I had the pleasure of meeting with both Superintendent Peter King as the Assistant District Officer and the Acting District Officer Superintendent Roberta McHale yesterday. We're very fortunate. I anticipate Superintendent McHale soon getting named as a District Officer for Western Alberta District, probably one of the strongest management teams within the division, and I think we'll be very fortunate and do well to have them leading the Western Alberta District. We're still continuing to try and increase our visibility within the community, making sure the members are out of the office, their foot patrols. We've, this year alone, we got two more members trained on their RCMP mountain bike course, so I would anticipate next year seeing some mountain bike patrols within the community. So just another initiative we're working on. We continue with working on upgrading the building. The RCMP is a very big machine that moves very slowly, so I'm figuring my way in, trying to jump through the hoops. I've now engaged the Northwestern Region Facilities Management Group to help us explore options, and I think one of the options will likely include leasing trailers, but I'm still waiting for some definitive answers for them to try and find a short-term solution for us. And the Drayton Valley detachment, we're fortunate, we continue to be a bit of an anomaly within Alberta in the sense that we have no long-term members off-duty sick. We are, as of today, fully staffed, but we are going to be losing Constable Kootu very soon, so we'll have one vacancy. There's a lot of detachments that are running multiple vacancies and lots of long-term ODS, so I attribute a large part of that in the support we receive from the town and county, and just the members feel very engaged here and really look forward to coming to work and continuing that, the good work they do for our community. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Any questions this morning? Councilor Comanna?
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
Regarding the jail and remand situation there that you mentioned, just for my understanding, you know, is it more of the jails in Edmonton, you know, they are kind of full, that's why there's a little bit of a delay moving them up there, or what information?
No, when we bring somebody, when we arrest somebody and bring them into our cells, we determine the nature of the offense, and if they're put in front of a justice of the peace, we have a JIR hearing, a judicial interim release hearing, and then the Crown Prosecutor combined with the JIR determine if the offense they've been arrested for and their history dictates they should be held in remand, and we play no role in that. We can make our recommendations, but ultimately it's out of our hand, and if they're, it's deemed they're going to be held, then, you know, anything beyond a day, then the sheriffs or we'll come pick them up or we'll transport them to remand. But the capacity of remand really is, doesn't play a role in that. They, they just find if they determine they need to be held short-term prior to their proceedings, then they're set to remand.
Okay. Thank you.
So just to follow up on that, what is the reason for the prisoner numbers going up or being?
And honestly, we've had that discussion, and we don't really have an answer. We don't, we're not sure why we're seeing so many people come to cells. I think part of it honestly is a bit of a change in the management philosophy. Myself and Sergeant Hootmer, both being very operational and coming into our administrative roles very recently from the field, encourage our members to be proactive, and if we have no issue paying the food bill, the guard bill, if somebody needs to go to jail, we want our members bringing them to jail and make sure that they're not going to be an ongoing problem in the community. So I think that, that might play a bit of a role in it, and I think just the way crime trends, the members are just seeing more, dealing with more people that they feel weren't needing to come to jail, whether it's to sober up or prevent a continuation of an offense, just to ensure the safety of the community.
Yeah. Good. And it's good to hear that, you know, the positive things that the offenses and the stats are down and that the RCMP are wanting to move here, we were able to fill those vacancies. I know that was two issues in the past that we've struggled quite a bit with, that trend of crime just keep going up and up and up for all rural communities, including our own. So to hear that it's going down, trending down is, is, is great, and I think it's very important to hear that and for us to be communicating that, because we went through, like I said, that time where everybody was pulling out their hair, we couldn't figure out why, we were just skyrocketing. So that's, that's great to hear, as well as the move we always talk about when, you know, we look at our RCMP doctors and things like that. We want our community to be attractive and welcoming and, and when we're trying to recruit. So, you know, hopefully it's working here if you're feeling that, so it's good.
It seems to be, and I've been a member in Alberta for 20 years now, and I will tell you right now, the RCMP within this province is probably the most proactive and progressive I've ever seen it. We got caught a little bit behind the eight ball, didn't keep up with current trends in policing and got a little behind the, the stats. The criminals progressed faster than we did, and the RCMP has worked very hard over the last five to eight years to really get out in front of that. And like I say, I think this is probably the most progressive and proactive I've ever seen the RCMP within the province, so I think that trend's going to continue.
That's fantastic. Any other questions? Councilor Evans?
Just a quick comment, not a question. You know, you mentioned the, the foot patrols and the mountain bike. I just think those are, those are great for the community. You know, I think it gets the members right out in the midst of our residents and makes them much more approachable, which I, I fully support, and I think a lot of people will appreciate seeing them out on the trails as well, and just right in the heart of the community where they can chat with them. So kudos. I think it's a great, a great way to, to serve the community.
Thank you very much, and as long as I continue working for Drayton Valley, RCMP, town of Drayton Valley and the RCMP, it's something that's pretty near and dear to me. And I think we have a tendency within policing, especially in the modern policing environment, where we're dealing with so much violence and so much negativity from the public. I think our membership getting out there and people understanding that there's actually a warm body under the uniform and that they are approachable and, and want to discuss things with them, I think that's the way we're going to stay ahead of, of crime within this community and keep everybody. We can deal with the bad stuff, we can deal with the dangerous stuff, but if we don't have community buy-in, it really limits our ability. So getting our members out there, getting the members of the community to want to talk to them and share with them and tell them the problems they're dealing with allows us to, to do our jobs most effectively. So thank you, I appreciate that it's being recognized.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, by being out in the community, that people get to know, like you said, the RCMP more, and maybe that they're less, you know, likely to commit crimes, because when you build that relationship and you're personable, you're, you know, you don't really want to damage that relationship. So when they're building that with the RCMP and you're out and you're kind of being present everywhere, I think that crime, you know, we've heard from other municipalities that crime seems to trend down a little bit, right? So it's fantastic. If there's no other questions, well, thank you very much for joining us this morning.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your day. Our next delegation is 7.3, Ms. Allison Struth from Innoquam. Good morning, welcome. Do you want to, yeah, come up to the podium? Yeah. So just make sure that the green light is on, and then you'll go ahead and you'll just share with us this morning, and then I'll open it up for questions or comments when you're done.
Excellent. I'm here with Seneca Duick from the Roots of Resilience Education Foundation.
Good morning, welcome.
Seneca helps guide me in my practice as an educator for Indigenous Studies, which I've been doing for, I think, about eight years now, and been in Drayton Valley for 10. I was invited by Lola to come and speak with you about what's going to be happening this weekend, next weekend, and next week in our community for the National Day of Truth and Reconciliation. Data has shown us that over the last so many years, we are progressing with the youth, the young youth, but what, the area in which we need assistance is educating everyone. We can't step forward in light of reconciliation if we go in without knowledge. And with knowledge becomes an area of awareness, without awareness will become appreciation, and with appreciation, allied ship and advocacy. And that speaks to us as Indigenous and non-Indigenous people within the community and surrounding. So I believe I have a video that we were going to show. Were we going to do that this morning? Just to get us off in a good way.
We'll bring that up. Or is the screen up here working too? It's always like that. That happens to us constantly. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, really, maybe we should get some, yeah, students joining us for council.
Sure. Oops, sorry about that. While we're moving along here, Seneca is also, what is your role? It's Indigenous education with Wildrose.
Yeah, so our company, Roots of Resilience Education Foundation, works with, in partnership with Wildrose School Division in all of the schools in the north, so Drayton Valley and Breton, and we support Indigenous education throughout all of the schools, which includes doing professional development for teachers and helping them build out their curriculum to focus more around Indigenous education and keeping up with their TQS, as well as working one-on-one with students of Indigenous descent who are either struggling or have absence issues, and working one-on-one with them to help support them through the education system as it is, as well as working within the classrooms to develop better understanding of Indigenous history and culture in Canada, so that all of our students, not just Indigenous students, have an understanding of the history and why things are the way they are. And so that's been our partnership with Wildrose. We also work with a lot of school districts and superintendents and boards to help develop what that program might look like within their other school divisions across Alberta and Canada. So, but specifically right now, most of our time is going towards Wildrose, so, and a partnership with.
Nice. And what was the name of your company again?
Roots of Resilience Education Foundation.
Perfect. Thank you. So together, Roots of Resilience and Innoquam Education, which is my business, I am sponsored through Warehouser Timberlands to provide education over a five-year period of time to teachers in helping them establish Indigenous education at the high school level in classrooms while blending resiliency through experiences of Indigenous people. Rather than going through modules and textbooks, we are hearing from and learning from and with Indigenous people who have lived experience, so we're not speaking to black and white text, which doesn't often reflect cultural traumas, cultural challenges, but also continuing to build on our cultural understanding of the significant resilience of Indigenous peoples. So that's where that goes. Now, with what you're going to be seeing here, I'll just give you a preamble. Next week, on Thursday and Friday, the schools partnered with the town of Drayton Valley with support of the Métis local, Warehouser, both the mill site and the timberland site, Roots of Resilience, and Innoquam Education in providing facilitation as well as funds to offer two showings to, or two days of showings to the high school students of the movie Bones of Crows, and then the town has three showings on the Saturday. And then the town has three showings on the Saturday, the 30th, which is the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. And that will be at 3 o'clock, 6 o'clock and 9 o'clock. And that viewing will show a true life experience, a true life, a true view of Canada as a person who has gone through residential schools and all of the things that follow up to and what has happened before. It's a true portrayal. There are very true scenes. And I don't think that that's something that we can close our eyes to and it's time for us to open our eyes. And I think that's why we're here. So here's truth reconciliation through Senator Barry Sinclair.
Sorry, we don't seem to have sound. Maybe just hit the mute on and off. Can we, sometimes that kicks it. Are you using what Lola sent? Yeah, and we just can't bring it up. Sorry. For those of you online, we're just trying to get, we have the video up, but we just can't, we don't have sound. So just bear with us, please. Can you play it from your computer, Nathan? If we just put a microphone by you while we play the video, can we do that?
Perhaps suggesting here to play it here for the audience and the presentation stakes here in this, with the sound that you have. And then upload it later on to the viewers at home and paste it in. So if we can change the over to that, we can do it.
We could put it on our Facebook page too.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe and just play your sound that you have, Nathan, for the people that are here. Just do a one, two, three, hit it.
One of the things that we at the commission have discovered is that it took us a long time to get to this point in terms of the relationship between Aboriginal people in this country. Seven generations of children went through the residential schools. Each of those children who were educated were told that their lives were not as good as the lives of the non-Aboriginal people of this country. They were told that their languages, their cultures were irrelevant. They were told that their people and their ancestors were Indians and pagans and uncivilized. They needed to give up that way of life to come to a different way of living. At the same time that that was going on, non-Aboriginal children in the non-Aboriginal school systems of this country were also being told the same thing about Aboriginal people. So as a result, many generations of children, including you and your parents, were raised to think about things in a, in a different way, in a normal way. In a way that is negative when it comes to Aboriginal people. We need to change that. It was the educational system that has contributed to this problem in this country. And it's the educational system, we believe, that's going to help us to get away from this. We need to look at the way that we educate children. We need to look at the way that the educator sounds. We need to look at what it is their textbooks say in Aboriginal people. We need to look at what it is that Aboriginal people, sounds are allowed to say within the educational system about their own decisions. In addition to that, we also believe that it's important when it comes to looking at the way that children are educated is to understand that because it took us so many generations to get to this point, it's going to take us at least a few generations to be able to say that we are making progress. We cannot look for quick and easy solutions because there aren't. We need to be able to look at this from the perspective of where do we want to be in three or four or five or seven generations from now? When we talk about the relationship between Aboriginal and non-Aboriginal people in this country. And if we can agree on what that relationship needs to look like in the future, then what we need to think about is what can we do today that will contribute to that effect? Reconciliation will be sure that everything that we do today is aimed at that high standard of restoring that loss to that relationship.
So in light of that, Lola invited us to, oh, sorry, in light of that. Lola invited us to speak to you and answer any questions you might have that we might have the answers to in the way of town and council, the town of Drayton Valley and surrounding areas that we can do to walk towards reconciliation. And it's a long path. It's not a quick fix. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you very much for that. I'll open it up for questions. So I'll just start by saying thank you for coming and joining us this morning. It's important that we are in this journey together that we're learning and we're gaining that knowledge. I appreciate you sharing the video. I'm looking forward to seeing the movie next week. And I know that there's a lot of people in our community that are, the movie that, the Bones of Crows, was that supposed to, I thought it was supposed to be running four days? The 27th, 28th, 29th, 30th, is that right? Or is it just the two days at the E-PAC?
Well, thank you. No, it's running for three days. So it is on the 30th for the public, of course, to attend. That's the Saturday and the two days ahead of that is with the school divisions. So it's three days, twice Thursday and Friday for the schools and for the public on the Saturday.
Okay. And then that's at the E-PAC, right?
Correct.
At the E-PAC building. Okay. Cause I think I got an email that said there was, I think it was running for four or five days. They were just to confirm. And then how are you, how are you advertising that for people to come? Is it on Facebook, in the newspaper? What are all the, kind of the means to get it out?
I believe that the FCSS has shared it to Facebook and Instagram. The schools have also posted it to their social media. And there are tickets being sent out. And Lola, can you tell us where are they being sent out from?
Okay, that's good for us to mention. So that tickets can be available at the Rotary House, at Value Drug Mart and the MLA's office for anybody that's online. And now I forgot which question I was going to ask. I was thinking about that. Oh, you, you mentioned Wildrose School Division. Is it open to, or were the students from Star Catholic invited as well?
Yes, no. Holy Trinity Academy will be having their grade 11 and 12s attend on the 28th at 10:00 AM. Then we have the 1:00 PM showing on the 28th for one of the groups from Wildrose School Division within our area. On the 29th at 10:00 AM will be the Breton School, High School. And then at 1:00 PM, another one of the Drayton Valley High School groups from Wildrose School Division. So again, Thursday morning, Holy Trinity Academy, which is Star Catholic. Thursday afternoon, Wildrose School Division. Friday morning, Wildrose School Division. Friday afternoon, Wildrose School Division. So that's how that's going. And just wanted to mention that this is a barrier-free viewing. That means no money is needed. There will be refreshments, drink and a snack provided to anybody who comes. They just need to make sure they have a ticket. So we are aware that we have enough seating. And I know that Lola and I were talking about, you know, if this goes where, you know, we get through the tickets right away, may look at adding an extra viewing, should that be a need of the community. So just watching what the community wants.
I think it's fantastic. I know last year on September 30th, we had our first round dance in the community. And there were so many people that came and it was celebrated and it was fun. I know that I couldn't keep up. I can't remember what time I had to go home. It was midnight or what? And I think that you and everybody stayed dancing the night away. So it was fantastic. And it's great to learn and to, to learn different cultures and to learn the history and, and the knowledge and, and the teachings. So I really appreciate you coming today and I appreciate that this year that, you know, we need to, or we are able to, to attend a, a movie, right? To learn more. Because I think you're right is that it's not going to happen overnight. It's going to be a slow and long process. And I think that the more and more that we do this, that the easier that will come, right? So I think by celebrating, by learning, by teaching, by sharing the knowledge and the stories is very important. And I know in myself that, you know, rather than just wearing an orange t-shirt or saying that this is truth and reconciliation, it's, it's getting out and it's being the action behind that, right? And it's educating. And I think that as generations come, that it will just be normal, right? That one day we'll look back and we won't be having these conversations. They'll, will have evolved to where we should have been a long time ago. So I really appreciate you coming and look forward to next weekend to seeing the movie and just, yeah, learning more and educating myself for sure. So thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
We have another delegation this morning. It is the, from the Métis Local 888, Ms. Louise Allchurch. Welcome. Good morning, if you want to come to the podium as well. Oh, you have a movie too. Well, hopefully we'll be able to just jump right into it and we'll know how to work the sound now.
I have no, no.
I thought, I thought you said, I'm sorry, a new.
I'm usually out the door.
Oh, don't even worry about it. We're very relaxed and laid back as you could see with, with our movie production quality there. We're, we're very laid back. So you just share with us what you want to share and then we'll open it up for questions or comments and
Okay.
Yeah, just be yourself.
Okay. My name's Louise Allchurch. I am the Métis Local 888 president. Just started a couple of months ago, so I am really new at the position.
Congratulations.
And right at the same time, we're into the elections. And last night was the elections. Still do not know the results for our district. We're still waiting for them. Wendy went to work in thinking, Wendy Snow is my vice president. And I was supposed to go in the place of citizen rep, but something happened in my, in my personal life. I had to step back and I pushed Wendy into the position. I am very proud of her candidate as she went through this. It's chaos. It's, everything is new with our governments now because we're going to go into a self-government. So everything is new. And so I am very proud of how she presented herself throughout the district. We've had long talks of how she was handling this and, and I'm very proud of her. And so we don't know the results of that. So she may not be my vice president for long. She could be sitting on a council for the new Métis self-government. Then there'll be another, thinking another election is going to be coming for the person who's going to be chairing the district. And how I can best relay how this is all going to be working. If Wendy gets this position, she will be like the MLA. And whoever gets the position of the captain would be like the mayor and or the rave of the district. We have 5,000 Métis in this district. And it ranges from Lodge Pole up to White Court, Port Sidneyboyne, Barhead, Spruce Grove, Stony Plain, Devon, down to the top of the Pigeon Lake, and then back over to Lodge Pole. That's our area. It's a very big area, lots of traveling and it's all new. So I'm just here to say I am looking forward to, as, just as, right now, I'm still the local president. I will be going for the captain position if I get it. Who knows? But I'm still the local president for right now. It's, it's just a big trial and getting everything going for the new government. But I'm here to say that I am looking forward to working. My motto was, when I took over the presidency state was, I want to bring community back. And I want to be a part of the community. My board is all community orientated. And that's what I want to do is make sure that we are a part of it. So I'm just, just here to say hi.
Well, welcome. Thank you for coming and saying hi to us. That's a big district, 5,000. Wow. And then so is the name of the district, the Métis Local 888, is that?
That's going to be changing.
Oh, that's going to be changing?
Yes. Well, as soon as we get the, the district captain, then that will be changing from. Because what it is right now is we've got locals, we've got associations, we've got societies. And we're in the process of trying to get that all settled with, with the Society Act. And there's a lot of loopholes we have to jump through. So that's, that's the process. But we had to get an election going to move into the new self-government. And I'm not very fluent with, with Cree or Ojibwe or any of those. And how do you say the new, no, the new, no, the new name of the government? Do you know? I, I'm not fluent in it yet, but I'm going to learn. I'm going to learn. I'm being very honest. But that's what's happening right now. It's all a new journey for us. So once we get, we'll be able to present a more fluent and more information as to how this is all going to work with, with working with councils, with the raves of all the big district that we're in, so.
And how many districts are there?
There's going to be 22 in, in Alberta.
22 in Alberta. And do you have a seat at the provincial table?
You know what? As far as I know, there will be the group that is the citizens, like the citizen reps. They will be going to, sitting with the provincial whenever they have to do consultations and stuff. So, and then we have the mayor, like the president. And then she'll be nominating a vice president. So there'll still be those, that kind of structure, which will be going towards dealing with provincial and federal.
Well, that's exciting. And it's, it's, it's kind of good that it is new because we get to kind of learn with you. As you're learning, we're learning too. So that's always great. Does anybody have any other questions? Counselor Clark?
Thanks for, thanks for coming in, Louise. I guess one of the questions I have, and I, I think I kind of understand kind of the root of this. I think Alberta is the first province to recognize Métis as, as a self-governing body, right? If I'm not mistaken. So go ahead.
Okay. There is three provinces that went ahead and declared that they were going for the self-government, which was Alberta, Saskatchewan and Ontario. There's a lot of hiccups going on right now with Ontario and Saskatchewan. And right now, I believe they're still moving forward with it. But we're not, right now, it's still in the hands of the federal government. So that's where, but we are still, we're able to have the elections. We're the only province right now that has had the elections. Saskatchewan has not and neither has Ontario.
What was the other question I was going to ask you there? So I guess as you guys are going through the process and learning and all those sorts of things, can you, can you drag us along with you?
Oh, I want to. I, I, I'm not going to, like I said, I am communicating to you that I am community. I don't want to leave anybody out, like for the town, the county. I am going to. And because it's such a big area, we're going to be traveling a lot just to bring in the other ones. to bring in the other ones. Whoever gets into as a captain has got a big role to play in bringing this district and like White Court and all those areas that don't have representation because they don't have a local. And we're very privileged that we do have a local here in Drayton Valley. And because there is a lot of people that are not being heard, of course, and we're seeing that. And so it's basically the same as what everybody else will be doing. We'll be wanting to know how we can help with the housing problem for our people, education, all that kind of stuff, just like what they were showing. We just, we want to be a part to see what, where we fit into this community.
Fantastic. Thank you. Any other questions? Just one more for me. So just trying to understand, so you said right now you are the president and then you will put your name in to be the captain? Is that correct?
Well, right at the moment, I am the intern captain until they decide if there's going to be elections because I'm the only local in this big district. We may not have to, but that is still on the table as, as we're going through. We're not sure how this is going to work, but I am the intern captain of the district right at the moment until they decide if we're going to have elections or not.
Okay. And then the election that happened last night will determine who is the, and what is the title then of this district? Who is the council?
That's, right now, it'll be me with my board. And because like I said, right now, they have no kind of direction as to how we're going to do the districts right now. All they were doing was the citizen representative.
Oh, so citizen representative, that's what the position that Wendy put her name in for the citizen representative?
Yes. And so that could be, there was three people that put their names in, Lola Wolf and Mark, what's his last name right now, from Devon and Wendy. And so the election was last night, we still have not got the results. We know the president of the, of the self-government has been declared. And, but like I said, it's just through Facebook. It hasn't, she has not come out publicly and said that she is yet. So, but the election, the counting is still going on.
So after the counting and if everything works out, then we would have a citizen rep and then we'd have a captain for our district?
Yes.
And is that how every district would have? And then you would all, all the districts would get together and almost like have a council meeting or is that? Or be that body of government for Alberta, I guess, all the districts?
Well, that'll be the civic, like the representative. She will be looking after the government part of it. And then we will be looking just after ours, but we will be having meetings with other areas around us. And, but what we will be focusing on is just the district.
Within our district.
Yeah. Yeah, the captains. And that's when we have our, getting all these new people on board. So it's going to be very interesting. I haven't lost my hair yet, but it's been fun. And so like I said, everything is changing very fast and we're just trying to keep up just like everybody else will be trying to keep up with what's going on.
Well, that's very exciting. We wish you the best of luck and congratulations. And please let us know who wins the citizen rep and kind of the next steps going forward. If there's anything you need, reach out, keep us in the loop through email or just a phone call or whatever as, as things progress. And we really appreciate you coming and spending the morning and sharing with us and teaching us a little bit more.
Now I can breathe.
No, that's fantastic. Thank you very much. And we have one more delegation, 7.5 this morning, Mr. John Ostabchuk in regards to a hot water tank leak. Good morning, if you want to just come to the podium. Thank you very much for coming. Bye.
Hi. Well, this is a little, little different topic here. I'm, we're the owners of a fourplex in Drayton Valley here for the last 11 years, at 4817 47th Street. And so this is the first time we've encountered a water bill, such big numbers. And apparently what, what happened here back in August, I think, is that our renter there in unit two noticed that his water consumption was, was going up. And I think his bill was $240, but he did say that they washed a lot of clothes, they're just the two of them, but usually the average is about six to nine cubes per month, water usage. And that's, that's about right, I think, if you look at the rest of them. And so the next bill that came in August 25th, it was $740, 34 cents, amount of 140 cubes. So that was, that was pretty high. So we've got the plumber down, realized that the relief valve on the fairly new hot water tank failed. And therefore we're not only heating the water up and sending it down the drain. So it costed us a lot of money here, but we got the plumber down and he did say that there's no reason why it failed, it just happened. And being a fairly new hot water tank, this shouldn't have failed. But anyhow, I've in the process of placing the moisture sensors on all four units. So if I got any leakage at all going forward, we'll know about it. So I'm asking the town to adjust the water bill there with this particular unit, unit two.
So in your ask, what type of adjustment were you looking at?
Well, I think their average probably is about 125 a month.
So that's the, the usage is averaging about 125?
That's the bill, yeah. Not the use, the total bill.
Oh, the bill is averaging about 125.
I don't, I don't have access to exactly how much their usage is. I don't get that information. But I got this invoice off of him because when I seen this, it shocked him as well, is a pretty high water bill.
And this, the water bill is for the renter?
Exactly. It's on his name. They look after their own utilities.
Okay, okay, perfect. I'll open it up for questions. Thank you. Counselor Ballas?
Yep.
Sorry. Says their last bill was August the 9th was 25271. So was the water tank leaking at that time?
I think it probably was starting to. The blow-off relief valve was starting to open up and it was starting to purge. So as time went on, they were gone for, for a few days as well. So when this thing did let go, it was just, it would heat up and then bleed off into the pressure relief valve and down the drain. So not only were wasting water, we were heating water before it went downstream.
Does you have another question?
It's kind of an unusual thing, but we've never encountered this thing before. So we're asking the town to give us a break.
Counselor Sheriff?
Counselor Ballas asked first question. So you said it was a fairly new water tank and you got a plumber in, is it not under warranty?
Uh, no. I think you get one year, two years, something like that. It was past the warranty. But you've got water tanks that are a lot older than that and they haven't failed.
Well, I was just wondering if you said, you're going to say how old it was, it was just fairly new?
Yeah, four and a half years.
Yeah, okay.
Past the warranty.
Have you reached out to your insurance provider to see what type of coverage?
Uh, no, I haven't.
You said about four and a half years old, the water tank? Any other questions? So if there's no other questions, we thank you very much for coming. It is on our next agenda item for business arising from our delegation. So we'll have a little bit more in-depth conversation about this. We appreciate you coming and bringing this to our attention. I know that it always takes courage for homeowners and residents to come and, you know, to ask that or to make a note. We're not aware of these things unless you bring it forward. So no request is, I think, silly or, you know, not reason to come to council. So thank you very much for that.
And you will let us know what the outcome is?
Yeah, yeah, we will. We'll be discussing it next on the agenda. I'm just probably going to call a five to 10 minute break and then we'll come back and do a little bit of business arising from. So you're more than welcome to stick around and stay. Or if you want to leave, then we can reach out to you as well.
Yes, you can reach out to us.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much for coming this morning. Take care. So I think before we move into number eight, if we want to just maybe call a 10 minute meeting and then we'll jump back into number eight and then our decision items as well. 10 minute break, yeah. We'll reconvene our meeting at 10:14 a.m. And our delegations are all wrapped up for this morning. We'll jump into our business arising from our delegation. The first one is 8.1 in regards to the hot water tank leak from Mr. John Ostabchuk. Came and presented his water bill to us this morning and was asking for council to adjust the water bill. So first I will open it up for any comments or question from council in regards to this? Counselor Evans? Sure. Go ahead. I have word like, sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm somewhat surprised that when the water bill doubled originally, that the, the renter or this gentleman didn't start to investigate at that point in time. He did state that the renter thought they did a couple of more loads of laundry, but I think for most people, when your bill doubles, that would, that would cause you to start looking around for something going on there. In my mind, they, they left it too long and just ignored it. But, you know, it did, it did cost the town money to produce that water and process that, that sewage that went down the drain. I feel for them, but I think it's, it's, it's the responsibility of a homeowner to, to take care of, of their water usage and be aware of what's going on in their, in their house. Even though this is a renter, again, I, I think they had plenty of warning before this, before it went up to $700, at $250, I think most people would be looking for the reason why that happened. So I don't know, in my mind, I'm, I'm not in support of wiping this bill out. You know, if, if there's, if council wants to, wants to give them a little bit of a break, I, I guess I'd, I'd support that. But by no means do I think we should, we should eat a, a large portion of this, of this bill.
Thank you for that. Any other comments, questions? Counselor Sheriff?
I'm just going to agree with Rick on this. I do think it's a homeowner's responsibility to look into any issues as soon as the bill starts looking a little bit questionable or a little bit more, start looking for the leaks, you know, the basics toilets, furnaces, water tanks and such. And I don't think it's the town's responsibility to cover that bill.
Sure, go ahead, Rick.
And Shelley, generally, if we see a major increase, we'll, we'll try and catch that and we'll try and let these folks know.
She's going to sit beside you.
So after looking at some of the history, it looks like it, there's a couple that were in the 125 range, but there is also a couple that exceed the $200 range. So it's kind of all over the place, depending on what their consumption is for that month. So we wouldn't have reached out to them until the bill would have reached the 700, which was this month.
So just remind me again, so typically, what triggers you to reach out to a resident? That?
A high bill.
A high bill?
Yeah.
So that somebody in our internal department that is seeing and flags it? Is that how that works?
Correct, yeah. We would try to go through their accounts and find a contact to reach out to to say, hey, listen, your bill was big, we think there's some sort of leak in your house. And then if we don't have that information, we would hang a door knocker on their door to say, please call, contact the town of Drayton Valley due to high consumption.
So did we reach out, sorry, did we reach out to the resident or did they reach out to us?
That, I don't have the information on because Kim is away today. But I would assume we would have because normally we do on situations like this.
So that might have triggered the, him coming today or asking. Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, so.
Oh, so an email was sent out.
Out from us?
To the renter, by the looks of it. It was a service request that came in about a utility bill on citywide.
Oh, so a service request came from, from them to us? We didn't reach out? Okay.
Yep.
And, and what was our response to that inquiry?
We see on your consumption report that your consumption is rising significantly monthly. So it's, looks like it had risen over some time.
And, sorry, to addition to that, so there's information in there how to start spotting a leak as a homeowner, what to do, tips, how to figure that out as a homeowner, some procedures that they can do to see what's most likely the cause of the leak. And then there's a follow-up conversation, of course, if the homeowner needs to do that after they done their, the things that we suggest to do.
Yep.
And what was the date of that?
This was August 28th.
The invoice went out August 25th? Okay. Go ahead.
So that was in response to the $700?
Yes, correct.
Yeah. Because in the past, they had seen some spikes here and there. So the 200 plus dollar bill didn't necessarily?
Okay. Trigger a concern?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then all of a sudden, yeah. Go ahead, Counselor Clark?
So I think last time we talked about a, a high water bill was that fell out during the fire, right? You know, I look back in my personal bills and I, I remember having a really high bill, like a $1,200 bill. And this is going back 15 years. So I dealt directly with the CAO at the time. And first question is, is should this stuff be coming to council? I mean, this isn't, this isn't like a $10,000 bill. You know, it's under a thousand bucks. And then secondly, you know, I like to play the contrarian here a little bit. You know, I, I think if we, so let's, let's say this is a 90-year-old grandma who's on, you know, a fixed income. She has this $750 bill and she's only bringing in, you know, $1,800 a month. You know, would we change our tune? So I, I think we have to look at this a little more objectively and just take a step back and go, look, is, is a $750 bill for an accidental release? And yes, I understand it's in their own home. Yes, mechanical failures happen, but, you know, I, I personally think we should look at cutting a little bit off, just from my perspective. And I've had cut, I think mine was cut in about 50%. So I paid, I'm going to say I paid $600 of that 1,200. So we're talking precedence, precedence has been set. Maybe not recently, but, you know, within the last 15 years for sure, personally with me, so.
And we did make that comment when the gentleman came about the water that was left on during the wildfire, right? So, and that's what we talked about, is setting that precedence. Then we're going to have other people come, you know, and asking for those breaks, right? Remind me the, it was an outside valve that was broken for the, during the wildfire?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, to a hose. Yeah. I, I think for me, I do, do struggle, I think, because it's, it's inside someone's house, whether it's inside or outside, the same as the last time. And I think like there are certain obligations and responsibilities as being a homeowner. Like you could have a faulty toilet, your plastic cap on the back of your toilet could break and could flood your entire basement. And I mean, I think that's why we have insurance in place for those accidents that happen and damage our homes, right? So that's the only thing is, you know, toilet that's, or a water tank or a leaky, you know? So we could be having these on a continual basis. Do we just say anything, any faulty appliance that happens in a homeowner's home is now, you know, if you don't feel satisfied with your bill, come to us and we'll pay half of it. Like, so I do struggle with it, right? Because I think that it's just part of being a homeowner. When this happens, it's unfortunate. And I would question. And I would question if, you know, I did ask him if he reached out to his insurance provider. So I think that this is something that would fall under your insurance, right? So I do struggle with these for sure. So we're looking at a decision. I know that, or I believe that administration tried to work with this gentleman and he felt that he wasn't getting the satisfaction that he was looking for. So he had brought it to council to see if he could maybe get a little bit more here, right? So with that, what is everyone thinking? Send it back to administration, you're wanting to forgive, what are you thinking? I'm gonna go to Councilor Manon, then I'll go to you, Rick.
Thank you, yeah, I'm struggling as well. I understand that this is unexpected bill. Also, you know, we are in a time that the cost of living is way higher and it's tough for everyone. But on the other hand, as the mayor mentioned, you know, it's the responsibility of the homeowner as well. But in the end of the day, I think, you know, it took the effort to come all the way here and, you know, time and effort. I'm kind of on board with Colin, just to see how much, if there's a little bit that we can do. Of course, not the whole thing, but something that maybe we could look into saying, you know, we can do 25% or something like that. And just say, you know, unfortunately, the rest is on you. And I fear about the precedents that we're gonna set as well.
I do think for the last decision, didn't we come up with a percentage or something? And that's how we, wasn't it? Yeah, it was on the water side, do you remember, Shelley? It was on the wastewater, yeah, there was a motion that, yeah. Because we said, coming forward, that's how we would kind of set the formula. Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, and that's what I'm wondering, you know, should we look at creating a policy for addressing these with a maximum percentage that would be approved as a break for somebody? Because I think that the more of these that we see and the more that we accept and give people a break, the more people are gonna come looking for a break with all kinds of reasons. You know, I feel for them, that they didn't, they didn't catch this. I just wonder how hard they looked, you know? And to me, just because somebody didn't bother trying to track down why their water usage went up and us giving them a break just because they didn't take the time to look for that. I mean, if this, if this hot water pressure valve is letting go and running this much water, I have to think that even if it's plumbed directly into a floor drain, you would have heard that thing emptying out and then reheating again. I mean, their gas bill must have been quite something as well, because they kept heating up the water and then dumping it, then filling it up, heating it again, then dumping it. So I don't know, I just struggle with, how much of a break do we give when people simply aren't checking their fixtures? I think it's a little different with the gentleman that, when we got evacuated, his hose was left on and it let go. You know, they weren't able to be home to notice that. I think that deserved a little a little consideration. For me, with this one, I don't know, it seems like common sense to me that you should be able to notice when your, when your hot water tank is constantly emptying and then being refilled. Like, this is a lot of water, 140 cubic meters is a lot of water going through a water tank. So, yeah, maybe, you know, that's my suggestion. I know we gotta deal with this one individually, but I think if we get a policy in place, then anyone who runs into this then knows that if they do go to administration or ultimately bump it up to us at council, we have a policy that we can follow up to a maximum percentage that we can give people back. So they know what to expect instead of kind of doing one-offs and, oh, this is a little more understandable, this is... You know, it just leaves too much room for kind of a personal call on it as opposed to a policy that we can follow and say, okay, we can, as for the policy, we can award you up to 25% or something. Just to me, it gives us some structure and it gives anyone coming in here requesting this some structure as well, a policy that we must follow. So that's, that doesn't do us any good for this particular one, I know, but I think moving forward, it would be nice to have something in place. I see Shelley's got her button on her hand.
They both do, there's a race. Yeah, no, I agree with you, thanks for that. I'm gonna go to Mr. Van Claveren first and then I'll go to Mr. Terry.
Well, I handed over to her quickly, but there is something in place that can be, let's say, explained, what we have, of course, and if that's not satisfactory for today, we can bring, of course, a report back, if that's the wish of council, to be directed to administration, to bring it back for further information and discussion later on. But in this case, I'll have Mr. Terry say what we have so far.
Sure.
We do have a policy in place that gives the CFO the ability to waive $450 worth of utilities. There is a policy already in place.
Who was that, who's the CFO?
Nope, CFO.
Oh, okay.
So that policy is in place, I'm just trying to think, this was a couple of years back, there was a gentleman that came that had had a line break, a water main break. And is that the policy that speaks to, if it's on the homeowner's responsibility that break, then they're responsible, but if it happens at a certain point, then the municipality, is that the?
No, that's our bylaws. So from the property line to the home, it is stated in the bylaw that it is the homeowner's responsibility. And from the property line to the main is the town's responsibility.
I guess the only reason I'm bringing that up is if in that case, it's the homeowner's responsibility, how would this differ, right? Like, for that? And I would, you know, I do appreciate Rick's comments on, you know, creating a policy. So I think there already is, in a sense, a policy in place in regards to if there's a break in your water, then that's your responsibility unless it falls beyond the property line, then it's the municipality. So I don't know if we could just have an addition in there, including all, yeah, yeah, in, inside of the home, but with a clause perhaps that said, with the exception of a disaster, right? Then for consideration, we would give up to 400, up to a maximum.
I need to correct that, it's coming in as I'm talking. It's actually 250 is what we can.
Okay, so up to, that's what kind of I would be leaning towards. Council Ballas?
Oh, sorry, we do have a policy in place. Has the CFO had the opportunity to view this bill?
That.
So what was that, sorry, could you repeat that, Bill?
I want to know if the CFO has had the opportunity to view the bill as per policy.
I know that she was made aware of it. I'm just waiting for her to respond here.
Anyway, my suggestion would be that it referred back to the CFO as per our policy.
Yeah, that's a good motion.
Yeah, I think that's good, yeah. Everybody's satisfied with that. And then I think going forward, that that would be, you know, saying that, please follow for any future concerns like that, please follow our policy. It's advised, the CFO has the, I guess, the authority making decision on that, unless it occurs during a, some sort of disaster, right? Then I think that would come for a different consideration. Council Clark?
Yeah, and I think we've talked about this before, is the remotely monitored water meters. I know other municipalities have gone ahead and done it, and I know it, they catch it very quickly. So I think that's probably something we should look at, get into the 2000s and maybe start looking at that technology.
I have been working on that, trying to figure out our best route. It is very costly, so just be prepared for when we do bring that to you. But it is, we do have the capability with the meters that we have now, two smart meter. It's just a matter of getting the programming and everything else that's involved with it up and running. That is quite costly.
Maybe that's a, put it on your wish list for budget.
Yeah.
Councilor Evans?
But that would still, even remote monitoring, that that would give us the ability to remotely download the usage from all the meters, correct? And that would still only be done probably once a month.
They do have capabilities out there that you can have the homeowner actually get alerts through email that would tell them if they have a leak.
So we would be monitoring the usage of every every home in the town?
It's, yes.
Daily?
Yes.
And software will do that?
Yes.
Okay.
The other municipalities?
Yeah, and I just, that's a lot of data to continually process. Yeah, I'm sure that's not cheap. I'm familiar with the, with the remote monitoring, but it was, it was a matter of monthly, instead of going house to house, you can then just, you know, download blocks and blocks of meter readings.
There's two separate types.
Yeah.
The one that actually monitors day-to-day or minute-to-minute is quite expensive compared to driving, parking, reading a block, going to the next block, driving, parking, reading a block. So it's a matter of how much we're willing to spend on that type of service.
Yeah, and is that? Yeah, is that our responsibility? Yeah, interesting, worth looking at, all right.
Okay, so the business arising from this delegation was that we'll revert that back to the CFO to follow as per policy. And then going forward, will, the recommendation will be to do so for any other delegations or requests that come. So thank you very much for that, Shelley. We'll move on to 8.2, multicultural society discussion. This was one of our delegations from our last council meeting and we didn't have a chance to talk about it. There was a request from the multicultural society, they did a presentation and they had asked for office space for their society to get together, welcome newcomers and have just kind of a little place that they could get together, perhaps three days a week or something like that. So today would be the day that we could talk about it. I guess the question would be, they did mention that they had made a request, I think, for the Rotary Club space and there wasn't space there available. They haven't made a request for that, is there space available at the Rotary Club? Oh, it is full, okay, okay, it is full. Does anybody have any questions, I guess, or I have a few? I guess my question would be, is to maybe work with the multicultural society to find out exactly how much space they need. They had mentioned that it was an office space, so we do have a few facilities around the community. If it is an office space, would we be willing to give that? I know that at the CTC, they were looking for a more central location, but I know at the CTC that we do offer for not-for-profit, the use of some of our classrooms, as well as we do have a room in the curling rink as well that I believe we've opened up for not-for-profit to use too. So maybe even the curling rink space could be as an option for them, presented to them as well, to see if that works for them. I don't know if anybody else has any comments or suggestions. Councilor Manon?
Thank you, a couple of things, I guess, you know, first thing is that it's on our strategic plan, I think was to be looked at quarter three of this year. The second piece is that I believe from the presentation, they were looking for some kind of a permanent location where they can have exhibits of different cultures and different countries as well. So then they can kind of have that location to advertise and have that out there. So if a newcomer from around the country or around the world comes to Drayton Valley, they know exactly where they need to get to, to connect with the rest of the community. So, yeah, I agree with the mayor's comments, you know, that's probably something that we need to work with the multicultural association and figure out what they're looking for and see how, as the town, we can help them on that.
And one of the other comments from the presentation was, I had asked the question whether they're working with other groups within the community and I know that he had mentioned that he hadn't reached out to the Chamber of Commerce because they do welcoming packages, as well as, who does the Culture Cafe, community learning? And to maybe partner with them so together, the three of them can collaborate and come up with something that fits the community as a whole, rather than duplicating services and things like that as well. Maybe there's some ideas there. Or you have? Okay, perfect. Okay, good. So yeah, just follow up, I guess, just let them know that the spaces that we have currently and then to help maybe facilitate those, like you said, you've already done with the conversations, to move that forward. Anything else? No, okay, so that is it then for business arising from our delegations this morning. We'll now move into our decision items. First decision item on the agenda is 9.1, Early Childhood Development Center Board Member Appointment. Ms. Lola Strand, good morning.
Good morning. So as per the Town of Drayton Valley bylaw, it establishes the Drayton Valley Early Childhood Development Center Board. We are to have five community-at-large members and one council rep on the board. We did have one vacancy, we received resignation from Samantha Henni as well, leaving two community-at-large positions vacant currently. We received one application from Chai Middleton. So Chai is a parent at the Early Childhood Development Center. She has two children attending and we always welcome parents sitting on the board because that, their input and feedback is important. If council has no further questions about the application, the recommendation would be that council appoint Chai Middleton for a one-year term to the Early Childhood Development Center Board.
Perfect, thank you very much. Any questions in regards to the appointment? There's no questions, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Council Sheriff?
I'll make a motion that the council appoint Chai Middleton for a one-year term to Early Childhood Development Center Board.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Council Clark?
Lola, we are still advertising the other vacant position, right?
Yeah, we're still advertising for one more vacant position.
And then just a question, so it's a one-year term, who determines whether it's a one, two, or three-year term?
So we allow applicants to choose their preference?
Oh, okay.
And she requested a one-year term.
The one-year term, oh, okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, there is a motion on the table, if there's no further questions, then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried, thank you very much for that. Moving along to our next decision item is 9.2, Urban Housing Program Annual Report. Are you presenting this as well?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
So I'll just get things started and then I'll be inviting Ashley Graham to do her presentation. This is in regards to our urban housing program, which is our 26 units of affordable housing that's owned by the Town of Drayton Valley. In December 2021, an RFP process was initiated to invite individuals, nonprofit organizations, and our businesses to submit proposals for the management of our affordable housing program. The property management company that we had contracted at the time had given notice that they would not be renewing their agreement to continue. After reviewing the three proposals received, the RFP committee, which consisted of administrative representatives, determined that the municipality would be best positioned to manage the
determined that, that the municipality would be best positioned to manage the program in-house. The contract with the former property management company ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, making July first, twenty twenty-two, um, the beginning of our in-house management of the program. So July first, twenty twenty-three marked the, the one-year anniversary of managing the urban housing program, making this our first in-house, um, annual information report. So in your package, there are three attachments. The first copy of, is of the presentation, um, that Ashley Graham will be presenting, um, shortly as the manager of the urban housing program. She is providing a snapshot of program, the changes that have been made over the course of the last year. Uh, the second attachment is feedback, um, that has been gathered from the tenants residing in the urban housing program that really highlights their appreciation and the progress that's been made, um, within that program over the, the last year. And then finally, a financial statement of revenues and expenses is attached, well, which I'll be going over after Ashley is done. Um, so I'd like to call up Ashley Graham now.
Good morning, welcome.
Okay, I'm new at this too, so it's green, so that means we're broken. So my name's Ashley Graham. I'm the, I, Community Services Program Coordinator. I manage the urban housing program from start to finish. Um, so the first slide, let me go to the next one, um, what is our urban housing program? So it's there to provide affordable, quality, supportive housing for families and individuals in our community. Um, it provides residents with an opportunity to work towards financial freedom, um, being able to move forward, increase their ca- um, capacity to make better choices with their finances and to obtain independent housing. So that's just basically a quick rundown of what our program is. So basically, it's helping people afford affordable housing so they can better themselves and move forward and move up in order to, you know, buy their own homes, things like that, maybe get a bigger place after, um, a bit of time in the program. So who do we help in our program? Um, this was something that I thought was very important for everybody to hear about, um, because it's not just one demographic. We have single parents, we have people with disabilities, um, families with terminally, terminally ill family members. We have elderly, we have young couples starting off. Um, we also have single parents, um, starting over after separation, domestic violence, um, things like that. And we also have an independent youth as well. So that's the kind of people that are in our program. So just in case, if you're not sure where our program is and what buildings and things like that, we have, the very first one is the Urbanata. Can you still hear me if I stay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So this is one of our units that we've taken over, um, we have three different properties, we'll go over them. So there's one one-bedroom unit in this building, the rest are two-bedroom units. Um, the one-bedroom is six fifty plus electricity and the two bedrooms are seven hundred plus electricity. So it's really reasonable for families starting off because a two-bedroom can start off at seven hundred and work towards it. We understand electricity has gone up, so it kind of helps balance it for people as well. Um, the next unit we have is at Center Court, that is the one, right? Um, so if you continue on, there's one more condo here and then the Shale Clinic is right beside it. Um, so we have these front two units, um, and they are three bedrooms and they are three floors and they are eight fifty plus all utilities. So when we jump into the three bedrooms, um, we noticed that the rent does go up to account and, um, cover all cost of all the utilities from there. The last set that we have is at Cadence Court. Um, so this one is a little bit different. Um, we have four condos in a building and then there's two sets of duplexes. So there's two duplexes that are accessible for wheelchairs. And in our lease agreement, um, it does say that, you know, they can be bumped if we need somebody, an accessible unit available, so we do have that option if something comes up. Um, then we have four three-bedroom condo units, um, and then two three-bedroom duplex units. And they start at two bedrooms or eight hundred plus all utilities. And then the three bedrooms range from eight hundred to eight fifty plus all utilities. So those are our three units that we have that we do rent out to. We're going to talk a little bit about the tenants since, um, June to now. So we have been able to, when we took over, um, we'll get into that in a little bit, um, of all the stats and things like that for you. But since June to December of last year, we lost nine tenants. That doesn't mean that they just, um, left or things like that. Quite a few went on to better things, you know, bigger units. Um, sometimes it's just a transition period, you know, if somebody leaves, let's just use an example of a domestic violence, if somebody leaves domestic violence, they need somewhere to go now and then they're able to move on to the next thing once they get on their feet. So then between January and June, we only had three, um, turnovers. So we're starting to see it slowly go down. Um, for terminations, we'd have dealt with two problematic evictions, um, throughout the time. And two others moved out before I served them eviction notices. So for that, um, we can be grateful for that because then we don't have to go down the whole eviction process. Um, the rental periods that our current tenants are in, so we have between the zero and one, um, we had seven. And then as we go down one to three, we had eleven, three to five, we have one, and five plus, we have five. So it just shows that some people are able to get on their feet and get going within the first year. Sometimes it takes a little bit longer. Um, okay, so on the next one, we're going to see a little bit of what has happened in the last year. So on this side will be June, the, like, the first month that I took over will be on this side and then over to here. So when I, when we started as the town, we had the Urbanata at fifty-six point two-five percent vacancy rate. The units needing repairs before we could rent them out, out of that fifty-six point two-five was thirty-seven point five percent. They were uninhabitable, we couldn't rent them out. Um, new to, uh, sorry, units needing repairs that were already rented out, um, was eighteen point six. There was lots of complaints when I came in to get things going, um, for maintenance-wise. So we were able to, um, it took a little bit of time, but we were able to adjust all of that. We are pretty much caught up for anything like that for now. Center Court was at a fifty percent vacancy rate. Um, one unit was rented, it didn't have some repairs. The other one was an insurance claim, um, and it was not rentable at that time. And Cadence Court was at a zero percent vacancy rate, they were already rented out. Um, but they all needed repairs. And then there was no waitlist provided when we took over, so we had to start from scratch in order to be able to build up the clientele and, you know, our waitlists and to be able to have, um, good quality applicants, we started from there. Going into now, um, the Urbanata has a twenty percent vacancy rate. That is only because of an issue that had come up, that we had tenants move out, um, as well as one being evicted. So, um, that will be, I'm sure you'll see it change over the next year. I'm hoping that we'll be at zero percent as well. Um, Center Court is at zero percent vacancy rate, it is full. Cadence Court is at zero percent vacancy rate, it's full as well. So now this is just from June, um, our lists have, our numbers have gone up. But the one-bedroom waitlist, we have five qualified. So what that means is that we've done their checks, um, we've called references and they do qualify, whether it's with a threshold or with, um, other qualifications that we have. Some are unsuccessful due to, um, whether they're over, like, over the threshold or they're just not a good fit. Um, two-bedroom waitlists were at eleven qualified applicants and three-bedrooms were at four. And then incomplete and ongoing, we have fourteen. So that fourteen number, they're not qualified yet because I don't have all the information.
Do you have any questions now?
Because it's a lot I'm throwing at ya.
Council Ballas?
How do you qualify or put them in order if you got a waiting list?
So we actually, before I started, there was a, a point system that came into effect. Um, so it has a bunch of different qualifying factors. So is it under the thirty percent of your total income threshold? Because that's a huge thing. If you only get eight hundred dollars a month and rent is seven hundred plus electricity, it doesn't make you, like, it, we're setting you up for failure, right? Because they, excuse me, they won't be able to afford it. There's other things such as where they're living now, are they overcrowded? Are they, um, is there health and safety concerns, things like that? And it goes in a point system and at the end, um, we tally up all the points and then whoever has the highest would be first on the list.
Council Evans?
Is this a, a spike in the waiting list? Or has the waiting list, the numbers on the waiting list been pretty consistent at, at those numbers?
Pretty consistent until after, then after I did the presentation for June, you're going to see a spike for next year.
So when you mentioned that, uh, some of the applicants don't meet the criteria, do we work with the applicants to ensure that they're accessing all possible means of income and revenue, like if they, that they've applied for everything, if they're, i- if they qualify, just so that they could maybe increase that threshold or that they're accessing dollars out there, yeah?
Yeah, definitely. So, um, we look, I'm in the same building in the Rotary House as FCSS, so it's really nice because I can refer them right there and they're in the building. Um, and I also have, like, there's other resources that I give all of our tenants or applicants. Um, we created a list of all the other rental apartments, only the apartments in Drayton Valley that we could find contacts for, so if we can't help them, we can at least give them some tools as well as giving them out to some different resources that might be able to help.
Perfect. Okay, you want to continue?
We'll continue on. So what has happened in the last year? Um, maintenance repairs was our biggest one. Um, there was quite a few inhabitable, uninhabitable units, um, that we had to renovate in order to get people in. So that took some time as well as appliances. It seemed like this year was, all the appliances were older and they all seemed to start going over the last year. So that is something that you're going to notice. Um, hopefully we won't have to do much more because we've replaced quite a few appliances. Um, what, so the majorities are stoves and fridges. Um, as, as a landlord or as a property manager, we have to ensure that they have, you know, a working stove and a working fridge, that's very important. Um, as well as washers and dryers, we're going to talk about that because each unit of ours has a washer and dryer. And because, um, of that, we have made so many tenants so happy. I've had tenants cry when I open up the laundry room and they get to see that they have their own washer and dryer because the number one complaint is, how can I push my stroller, carry the garbage bags, because I don't drive, to the laundromat, entertain kids while I do laundry and do it all the way back in the winter? So that was a huge thing as well as, um, so we know that bedbugs are a thing and other bugs are a thing too. And sometimes they can be transferred through washing machines if they're not using hot water and dryer. So that's another thing, just to eliminate the, we won't have that risk because everybody has their own. So I just wanted to touch base on that. Um, so we've increased customer service. We're going to talk a little bit about that later, um, but I'm available like four days a week for, um, our urban housing program. So if they have any problems, they can call me between business hours. I'm there supportive, sometimes it's as simple as they just needed extra resources. So say they're tight that month and they're like, oh, do you know anything about where we can get food? You know, there's some churches that have pantries and then we have some resources like the food bank that we can give it to. So it's nice that they can just reach out to somebody if they need something or have questions about the building, there's somebody around to answer. Um, so we've been building up the program's reputation within the community. I got told when I started that the urban housing program was the ghetto of Drayton Valley. Um, I don't think it has that reputation anymore. We've been talking with a lot of different, um, community members and things like that. And everybody seems to want to get into our Urbanata building right now. So that, before, we couldn't even get people to go into it and now we have a waitlist for it. Um, and building rapport with tenants. So when a tenant comes in, they meet me right at the beginning. We do the application together, we go through everything and then we're able to work with each other over the few months if there's a waitlist and things like that. Whereas before, we didn't, there was no connection because it was two different entities. So I know from the application process right until they move out, that's all done in-house and it's done the same way throughout. And the tenants really like that. So some of the things that have changed, um, are improved building safety. This was a huge one for all of the tenants when we took over. Um, one of the biggest concerns was the homeless and people doing drugs in the building. Um, so we took that very seriously. We've changed door codes and locks many times. Um, we now have, the building is secured, you need a key to even get into the back door to use the code. Um, we've increased attendance in the building, this, between myself and maintenance, there's somebody there likely every day or every other day, even if it's just in passing. We do yearly health and safety inspections. Um, we work along with our health and safety just to make sure that we're up to date on anything. Um, improved building presentation, we are very lucky that our cleaners and maintenance people were able to put a garden out front. Um, that's, people have, the tenants have said it just made it so much more homey there. Um, there's a weekly deep cleaning and mowing. So when you walk in the building, when we first walked in, when we took it over, um, you could just smell it, smelled like an old building, like, and now we're on it. If the carpets need to be washed, they get washed, things like that. Um, we created a tenet board in the back, so then that way we can put community, um, events, anything that could help all these, that, you know, the affordable housing program. People need more resources sometimes, so we make sure we put it out there so they have some information. And then snow removal, one of the biggest complaints that we had was that they would wait weeks for snow removal in the parking lot and couldn't get out. So that's a huge thing that it's actually, like, it's getting done now as well. Um, we're, we kind of talked about the ghetto and reputation, how we're changing that over. So now everybody is seeing that, you know, it's a good program. Um, and it's a town employee, like I said, I'm available four days a week from the start to finish and I'm able to offer other resources as well. Um, so in your packages, there were some letters, I'm not sure if you guys had a chance to read them. Um, but I just took out a few quotes on the next slide of some of the stuff that was brought up in those letters. Um, one person says, "I feel safe in my apartment now," as she, which would be myself, "has changed the door lock installed on the back door and has changed the pass codes. I no longer have to step over homeless people to get to my apartment suite." "As a single parent to a young child, the urban housing program has been able to give me more than just a place to live. It allows me to have a safe and private place to call home as well as giving me the opportunity to save for a future." And then as a single mother, the urban housing program offered me housing that I would not otherwise be able to afford. So those are just a few quotes out there, there is so many good things, so I do recommend you, um, if you have time, read those, all the letters. Um, we're going to have a couple of success stories on the next slide. This is just, there's only one in here that's not during my time. So a single mom post-separation was able to move to a bigger unit after just a few months in our building. A couple with grown children were able to move out and get a bigger place so they could, um, and adult children, they just needed more space. A couple with young kids, um, and expecting wanting to move to a bigger, or were able to move to a bigger place after a few years in the program. Um, I'm not going to keep going, but you can see that there's quite a few. Um, we have one that's ready, almost ready to buy her own home and we did have one actually able, before my time, to purchase a home after being in the program. Something else that our program does is we take over the Making Financial Sense program with FCSS. Um, this is a very good program. If you haven't taken it or, um, don't know much about it, please feel free to reach out to me afterwards. Um, it's very beneficial. Before we took over in June, four pe- four tenant families, so that won't be like a husband-wife, it's one family. Only four had taken it and now we have twelve to date. And we're still working towards the next one in order to, um, get almost a hundred percent compliance. Uh, the mandatory Making Financial Sense program was enforced, um, and I learned a lot from the class I attended this year. With the towns and Ashley's management, my financial goals are becoming achievable. This is from one of the moms who's almost ready to purchase her own home.
What do you mean by enforced?
Sorry?
What do you mean by enforced?
So in our lease agreement, it states that they have to attend eighty percent of the Making Financial Sense program in order to stay in the program. Because the program is meant to help people achieve goals to be able to move forward. So, um, it wasn't enforced before. They could attend, they couldn't, like, I, I don't know much to say about that, but now I'm very strict, like, if you haven't taken it, it has to be completed within so long of your, like, fall in suit with the lease. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so it's part of the lease agreement.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So then, the next thing is partnerships and collaborations. This was a huge one for me, when I started, there was nothing. I had a really hard time breaking down, like, boundaries with other places and things like that. But it took some time, and now these are some of the different organizations that we either have partnerships with, or collaborate with. So FCSS, Brighter Futures, Drayton Valley District Community Learning Association, Primary Care Network, PCCS, Enforcement Services, Family Resource Network, or McMahon, Burden Bears, and Alberta Health Services. So these are just some that we now are able to have a good working relationship with. So what are the goals for the next year? So the number one thing is to become more family-oriented. Majority of our people in, especially, you know, Urbanata, or some of the bigger units have kids, and when we first took over, there wasn't really much for kids to do. And now we see, it was really nice to show up one day, and the kids are outside actually, like, doing drawings and playing, and when I started, they wouldn't do that, because there was so much stuff happening around there, that we weren't able to, like, kids weren't able to go out and play, because they didn't know what they were going to encounter, so we have worked on that. Making Financial Sense is gonna come again in the spring, we haven't set dates yet, but that will be coming soon. And we want to keep up with the 0% vacancy rate. I think that it is very achievable to keep it that way, as long as we continue working towards it, and, you know, we might have a month here and there if somebody leaves in time to fill it, but I really do think that we can keep it full at all times.
And that is all. Do you guys have any more questions for me? Thank you very much for that, any questions? Councilor Clark?
So Urbanata, in '22, when you took over, there was 37% of units, I think there's 16 in there, right?
Yeah.
And six of them were in need of, like, complete repair. I guess my question around that is, I mean, it's prior to you, but, you know, we had a property manager in there, supposedly doing some property management, but obviously that wasn't getting done, so you know, those six units that had to be redone, obviously there's a cost with it, and it's probably not a low cost, it's probably significant. Who paid for that? Was it the ratepayers in Drayton Valley, or is that?
That'll be a little question. When it comes to budget, she'll have all the answers for those ones.
Yeah, I guess my point there is, you know, if we had a property manager not property managing, why is the ratepayer picking that tab up? So I can leave it at that for there, and Unit 6, same thing, insurance claim on Center Court. So I guess, moving forward, how often are we doing inspections? I know we're doing the yearly health and safety, but per unit, how often, how often are we getting in there?
So, right now, like, any, I do them yearly, no matter what. There are quite a few times that we have to go in for maintenance issues, so they get in, you know, maintenance is in there, and if they see things going on too, they let us know. But yeah, for sure, at least once a year, we're in the actual apartments now, and seeing what's going on.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I don't know if that's enough, I mean, a lot can happen in a year, right?
Yeah.
And a perfectly good place can be destroyed in months even, so
Oh, for sure.
Might want to think about upping that.
Definitely.
And then, so is it you going in there and doing those?
Yeah, usually I go in with maintenance or health and safety, so it's not just myself, we do have a work alone, like, we make sure that we follow, so I'm not going in by myself.
Okay. And last, I guess I don't 100% understand what the model is, is it, is it cost recovery, are we subsidizing? Again, are the ratepayers, what are they paying at the end of the day, if anything?
Yeah, it's definitely not at a point of cost recovery, for sure. I'm not sure if affordable housing will ever be cost recovery. However, projecting in the future now, we were definitely over budget in 2022, because of the low, the high vacancy rate, and all the repairs that need to be done. Things have improved significantly in 2023, I would say. According to projections for the remainder of the year, I don't think we need any direction for adjustments, for financial adjustments or service adjustments, and, and we do plan on doing some adjustments for the 2024 budgeting process, so I'll bring that to you, but no, it's not cost recovery.
Even with the full, with having no vacancies?
No.
No. Councilor Ballas?
Thank you. Just looking at the financial summary, I can read last, at 2022, we had a deficit of roughly $69, just over $69,000. Is, so that, I assume there would be no reserve, because you're not even at a cost, a break-even point?
Great.
So this would come out of general revenue, is that where it comes from, or?
Thank you for that question, yes, so this is a presented operational budget, so this comes out of general revenue, so basically it's a program that's subsidized by the ratepayer, based on the approved budget for 2023, and of course, 2024 will have another presentation again on the budget, and how that will play out will be during the deliberations.
And is it correct, when you look at this, that the expenses were, okay, now I see what it is, the total expenses are $267, and then the revenue is $198, is that for the $212 and the $161, is the budgeted, the actuals?
Yeah, that's, that's for the first year, from the period July 1st of 2022, to June 30th of 2023.
Okay. So they'll get the $198 and the $267. Any other questions?
Sure.
Correct if I'm wrong, all utilities are included in the lease?
No, so at the Urbanata, only electricity they have to pay, but all the other units, they have to pay all utilities. So only the Urbanata, we cover the sewer and water and gas there, but electricity is not covered.
Thank you.
Councilor Kamana?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, you know, as I can see from previous year to this year, as you mentioned, there's a big improvement, so thank you for that. Just a couple of questions, I think I can remember a few years back, there were either surplus, or we were breaking even, if I'm not mistaken. And then it just started changing, and there were big deficit last year. I'm assuming there'll be a lesser deficit coming this year. But was wondering, you know, how do we bridge that gap a bit coming to 2024 budget fight, you know, would there be any proposals that administration will bring forward for us, and?
Yeah, so I'll be bringing forward some proposals for 2024. But again, there was, it was closer to break even before, however, there was lots and lots of work that needed to be done to those buildings, once we took it over, to get them to where they're at now, and also to get the program to where it's at right now. I'm really proud of what Ashley's done, as far as creating that positive, that positive reflection in the community about, about what affordable housing is. She's built a very positive rapport with the tenants. Just, like Ashley mentioned, our affordable housing was called the ghetto before, and people are really seeing it in a positive light now. The vacancy rate is able to be up, because the repairs are all done, it's beginning to be in really good condition now, but all of that has come at a cost.
Yeah, right, so we are, we are kind of over that hopefully hump, and then, you know, we could start making proposals to
Yes.
Bridge that gap. Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
Councilor Ballas?
Thank you, when I'm looking at salaries and benefits, whose salaries and benefits does that include?
That's Ashley's.
Just Ashley?
Yeah.
So if you bring in, say, maintenance from our people, that's not being charged to these?
No. Perhaps Mr. Van Clavon can answer how maintenance, the maintenance costs work?
So thank you for that question, so the maintenance costs, let's say the materials are, of course, sourced out to the budget for the urban, for the housing itself, so contractors have to come in and stuff like that, is directly. The cost for the maintenance crew, percentage-wise, is brought into one pool right now. In previous years, there was a kind of a, let's say, calculation in administration behind the scenes per unit, so basically everything, not per your housing unit, per department. Right now, those costs directly for the maintenance crew is brought under one budget item, and is not split out, but all the cost other related, like contractors and material costs, are in this urban housing program.
So actually, the maintenance cost could be increased?
Yes, as soon as we, if you split out the maintenance cost for the maintenance crew, and you say, what are they spending over there in urban housing, there would be a cost associated to that, yes.
Thank you.
So I just have a couple of questions, I did see a post on Facebook that we're accepting applications, that there was vacancies. That would be for the 20% vacancies, the new ones that just came up, right? Advertised?
No, those ones were full, we just had two more move on, but they're already full again. So I do have one more coming up in November, that we're looking to fill.
Okay, and that was the, because I just seen the post this morning?
Yeah, we filled it by the end of the day yesterday.
Okay, because I seen it, and then I'd seen this was coming, so that's why I was like, wow, I wonder what happened there?
June 30th or July?
Okay.
So a few things have happened in the meantime, but though, like, there won't even be a month, like, it'll basically, somebody will move out on the 30th, the next person's in on the 1st, so
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
So we'll make sure that we're communicating that on Facebook, that these vacancies have been filled?
Yes, but we actually have, I'm accepting applications, I gotta get them to just change the wording of it, we are getting low, like, based on these applications now, it would be nice to get a couple more for, like, the three bedrooms, and things like that to have on file, because we're starting to get to the point that some of the people are gonna start moving on, and I want to be prepared, instead of just waiting for them to be like, okay, I'm done next month, and then I'll just be like, oh no, are we gonna fill it within a month if somebody has leases and stuff? So I like to be proactive and have things ready to go.
Start doing those checks and everything, getting them on that waitlist, gotcha. And then also, did you mention that we have a couple of units that are for residents with disabilities, that they would get bumped, if somebody?
So in our, yes, so we have two real, like, accessible units. One of them does, like, you know, if they, if, if somebody applies, and they're the next in line, but they need an accessible unit, it's actually written in the lease that if you're not, if you don't need the accessible unit and you're in it, you can be bumped as long as there's another unit similar to go into.
Okay, I was just
It has to be similar or the same, like
So they're not left without, yeah.
Yeah, no, so like, say we have a unit in the same facility, but just, you know, maybe they would just move over to the next duplex or something, but we would never just, you know, kick them out and say, that's, that's
That, wouldn't it make sense just to leave those units always just for tenants with disabilities, so we're never having to relocate? I'm just saying, you know, because it is a little bit unnerving if you've, you're in there, and then all of a sudden, you know, two months later, you have to move because somebody else comes up, it's just kind of a pain in the butt, right?
Yeah, and right now, they're, they're, like, they're full, the accessible units are full, so I can't, we won't be bumping anybody anyways out of there. But, yeah, so that is a thing, and we do go over it with the lease and during the application, if they do move into those units. It is explained, and we go through the entire process, that if that does happen, this is what it looks like.
There is a risk of, yeah, that happening?
Yeah.
Councilor Ballas?
One other query, I guess. Provincial government is dumping a bunch of money into affordable housing. Is there some aspect, or some provisions, that perhaps, that there may be some money available for our affordable housing?
No, unfortunately, the provincial funding that is available is specifically for adding doors, not repairing doors, I guess. So the Brazile Foundation is currently doing a survey, we've shared it online. They're trying to make a case to, to build new affordable housing in Drayton Valley. So that's the focus of that provincial funding, is new affordable housing.
Okay, because I just noticed that, I think they're giving the city of Edinburgh a whole bunch of dollars to renovate a building for affordable housing, so I was just curious.
So for renovations, it would?
To renovate a building, to turn it into affordable housing?
Oh, so it wasn't, it's not current?
Their focus is adding doors specifically.
So if there was a motel, sorry?
Go ahead.
If there was a motel available for sale, and we wanted to convert it to affordable housing, there's a potential for dollars.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Amanda, go ahead.
Thank you, I was gonna ask on the same line, so I believe federal government has budgeted some as well. And they're announced a few, last week, I think, after their retreat, that they're gonna work with municipalities directly to distribute these funds for affordable housing. And I think we are, in Drayton Valley as well, have a bit of a concern about affordable housing as of now as well, so I guess, as, as down in Drayton Valley, are we looking into that, you know, of how we can secure some funding towards that, and then probably how we can expand, I guess we need to have a discussion at council level as well, but, you know, is there some plans for us to look at something like Bill mentioned? Of, you know, we have these units, and how do we expand beyond that?
So typically, in Alberta, the RDN is very involved in that federal funding. I will be attending the RDN AGM tomorrow, and I, I hope to get some information there. There also is some ways that I can work at, perhaps partnering the Brazile Foundation with the RDN, to try to go after that federal funding. So yeah, so there's, there's some possibilities there, for sure. I don't want us to, like, I want us to support the Brazile Foundation, they are the housing authority, and, and their goal is to increase affordable housing in the community, so I think as a municipality, our best bet is to support them to do so.
Could be, could be a different avenue that we can take as well, right, but I think, you know, as a council, we need to have a discussion on, on the direction, and then, I guess, I, you know, give you the, give you the tools that you need to go out there and get that support, because the existing affordable housing is actually under the town of Drayton Valley.
Right.
Right, so, and that time, the, that was the best option for, for the community, and I think, in my mind, that hasn't changed. So we need to have a proper discussion on that, and I guess, you know, information from the administration to the council, and have that discussion, and then which direction that we need to go. Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? No, I just want to say thank you very much for your report, I appreciate it, and it looks like you're doing a fantastic job, lots of positive feedback and comments, so thank you very much for that, it's nice to see us go from so many vacancies to having no vacancies. My only, I guess, question or concern would be the same as Councilor Clark, in, in regards to the why so many repairs that we had, right, and why were they left for so long, and I would agree too, maybe rather than that year, you know, I think if we could do quarterly or something, because, yeah, things can get out of control a lot sooner than, you know, one would, would expect, for sure, so it'd be nice to be able to stay on top, I think that would keep those costs down, if we are having to repair or something, or, you know, today, even when we had somebody come about a leak, right? It just helps to mitigate, I think, any future, you know, or unforeseen costs, so definitely something like that.
Thank you very much, and we are, I have a very good relationship with our tenants now, so we, now if something is wrong, we, like, we're right on it, maintenance has been great. So like, we, we don't have to worry about, you know, a leak that's gonna continue on, because we have such a good relationship, that the moment now that the tenants see it, they let us know, and maintenance is in there really quick, so I just wanted to touch on that, just so you guys are aware.
Perfect, well, thank you very much for that, we appreciate it. And I guess that we're looking for, if there's no other questions, we're looking, or I'm looking for, a member of council to make a motion this morning, so get a look to my right this morning, because you guys are always so eager to make motions. Councilor Clark, sure. 26, I believe, page 26?
You betcha. Hey, I will move that council accept the urban housing program annual report for information.
Thank you very much for that, any comment, question, or debate on the motion? If none, then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move along on the agenda, 9.3, Amanda Snow Policy Remove Uh, we'll move along in the agenda. Nine point three, uh, amend our snow policy, remove, or amend our snow removal policy. Mr. Showinger, good morning. I seen you over there waiting patiently. Welcome. Yeah, come down here, yeah. I have a feeling we'll have a lot of questions, so might as well settle in. Now that I've scared you off.
Well, just to start, thanks for having me today. Um, so for today, uh, agenda item is the, um, uh, amend snow removal policy. So I'll start with the proposal and background information. In two thousand and twenty-two, council agreed to amend the snow removal policy to remove the private property sidewalks that Parks was clearing. In the maps, there were some areas missing that the town of Drayton Valley are required to clear. We have added them to our map for council's approval. Uh, also, the area that borders the Three Nights parking lot has discrepancies. The landowners are disputing, disputing to have to shovel the snow as the town currently maintains the grass along Boulevard. Uh, we've also created a map for council, a council decision on if the town should be responsible for this section of sidewalk, please see below. Uh, so a couple of options here. So option one, uh, is the map that includes the missing portion of the town, uh, town properties that we're responsible to clear. This includes adding easements that were missing in the original map, as well as some portions of our trail network that were missed, but we maintain. We have also included, uh, the removal of the sidewalk on the north side of Forty-third Ave where the new school is being built. We also changed the color scheme of the, uh, routes to make the routes more efficient. Uh, option two, including all the changes in option one, as well as adding back the portion of sidewalk that borders the Three Nights parking lot. Administration is seeking decision from council on choosing option one or two. Uh, so financial implications are none. Legal risk implications, uh, if we do not maintain the areas marked on the map, there are slip trips and fall liabilities present. Uh, no organizational impactions. And service level, the only service, uh, the only service implication would be if we were going to increase the service level for the Three Nights parking lot. Alignment with legislation and town plans, community cleanup, beautification standards, uh, stakeholder and communication strategy. Communication with the landowner of the Three Nights parking lot area will be completed by administration as soon as decision is made. Uh, next steps, once decision is made, we will update the policy with the new map and communicate with the landowner regarding the decision that has been made going forward. So recommendations, first one, council approves option one to update the snow, update sidewalk maintenance and snow removal map. And the alternatives, uh, two, the council approves option two to update sidewalk maintenance and snow removal map. Or three, council accepts this as information only.
Thank you very much for that. I'll open it up for questions. Counselor Evans?
Um, 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 which map are we? Are we looking at here, Nick?
So it looks like it is the, the last two pages.
The last two?
Yeah. One, uh, one has all of the, uh, the added areas and the, uh, I guess, just the different coloring of it, just to make it a little more efficient for us. And then the last map has the added, uh, Three Nights parking lot area.
And, uh, just so I understand that, piece of the Three Nights parking lot that you're proposing is, is the, the sidewalk directly beside, uh, the road, all the way in front of it?
Correct, yeah, it's the, uh, the Boulevard Road there, that, that, uh, runs along the roadway.
Okay, so, so we would, we would leave responsibility for the walkway in front of those businesses to the businesses? And we're, we're covering the snow clearing on the sidewalk i- in the Boulevard or by the, by the road there?
Uh, sorry, can you say that again?
So the businesses will clear their walks right directly in front of their businesses, so Three Nights and, and, and et cetera.
Right.
Uh, and we're clearing, uh, the sidewalk adjacent to the road.
So that would be for option two, yes. Option one would be removing that.
So they clear.
So they would, they would.
Right, okay, okay. I just wanted to get that straight in my mind. And for, for other businesses, uh, uh, around town, how are we treating them? They're responsible for the sidewalk, uh, beside the road?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, so because we cut the grass, they feel that we should clear the snow too?
Well, I think this all came about when we decided to stop doing snow removal for fifty-first, uh, the downtown core businesses, when we removed that, and then we've been all over the map since there. If we're not gonna do it there, then we're not gonna do it here. And then that's where, I guess, we had conversations where, does it, are we doing the snow removal directly in front of our business? Well, what about the parking lot? Is that not the business? What about? So we've kind of been all over it, and we have had feedback from the businesses in the community in regards to this. Um, specifically Three Nights saying, you know, they understand having to do in front of their business where the safety is, but to do the sidewalk, they believe is the responsibility of the town, right? Um, I guess, what other businesses, because I guess this was, this was last year, that came to us, did we have those concerns coming from? If you could take us back, if you remember?
Yeah, personally, I, I don't know if there's been a ton that has come to me. I don't know if.
What about Dodson? Didn't we have someone from Dodson Plaza too come forward? Was it down there? Chris Wall? Yeah, I think it was the same as they understood in front of the businesses. But again, on the sidewalk that was adjacent to the streets, I think there was there. And I know we, we said we had lots of time to think about it, and here we are again. Now it's approaching us, so it's before us and we have to decide. Uh, Counselor Kamana?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, the thing is that when we did the change, um, like you mentioned, you know, it's been trying to figure out, you know, from here to there to everywhere, right? So, but in the end of the day, I think we need to treat it as a package, rather than, you know, uh, this is just a little bit different than here. You know, we, we could, if we try to do that, then there will be lots of scenarios that we could run into.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, I guess, uh, what I would like to do, uh, is just to revisit that whole, um, um, approach that, that we took last year and see, you know, um, the downtown area. Um, I've heard from businesses downtown where they would like to go back to where it was before. Of course, they understand the, uh, financial implication. Um, some of them even mentioning that, you know, um, we, yeah, you know, if there's a little bit of a tax increase to, to do that, that's fine with them. As, as long as that's been, been done as, as before, right? So it's just, they understand the financial implication. It's, it's convenient for, for them, uh, as well as, I think, it's our downtown. So just my opinion. I know there's different opinions, uh, around the table. Uh, but I think if we, if we are approaching that, uh, we should approach it as a, as a full package, rather than trying to, you know, figure out what's here and what's not there.
Thank you for that. I know I had some discussions too with, uh, on the fifty-first, the downtown businesses. And the discussions that I had, I don't think were a concern that they had to shovel or do the snow removal. I think the concerns were, is where they put that snow, right? So there was that, if they shovel and it snows a lot, then they push it kind of a- adjacent to the road. And then when we come and we clear it and it gets pushed back. So there was just that discussion, like, how do we come to a common ground of where to put the snow? And then just for, um, at the intersections as well, right? To make sure that there, there's, the snow's not being pushed up there and that there's still being, uh, I guess the town's responsibility is that those crosswalks and things, making sure that they're cleaned and then, like, um, salt it, so there's no one slipping and things like that. That was kind of, I guess, the concerns that I had heard. I would say the majority of people understood that it was the responsibility. They said that when they get to, to work, that, you know, upon their customers coming, it was important for them to get them cleared and have a clear walkway for their customers coming into their business. So for them to do it was, um, you know, not out of the ordinary. Uh, for me, I, I do look at Three Nights, that street and Dodson Plaza different, because I just think it's an additional street. Uh, and I know we've had some back and forth around this. I think that, you know, if we're gonna set the precedence and everybody's responsible for clearing, if you own a business, directly in front of your business, I think if it goes beyond that, I, I do think that it's the municipality's, you know, job to do that. I'm leaning definitely more towards option two, because I think that now we're Three Nights is and Dodson Plaza, that we're requesting them to do a second snow removal. They're responsible for in front of their business. Now they're responsible for in front of, I guess, the, the driveway and the street. So I don't know, I'd look at that as different. I would say that, that's our responsibility. It's our sidewalk, right? And I just see, keep doing in front of your business, and we'll handle the businesses. When you look at Cobblestone, their business is directly on that sidewalk, so I would expect it to be cleared. But I mean, if there's parking between and a sidewalk, then I say it's our responsibility. I think Counselor Evans might disagree with me, and I will open it up. Or your comment.
I, I don't necessarily disagree with you, but what we, what we said last year when we went at this was that, yes, the businesses would be responsible for the sidewalks along the, along the streets. And I was hesitant at the time, and with our expectation that that would get done. Um, yeah, it was, whatever sidewalk was, was surrounded, that piece of property was the business's responsibility. And now.
No, I was, I, I think I was with you last year in the same, that I didn't think that, I thought, and that's where it kind of went back and forth. Well, you look at other businesses where it's our street, and I, I don't know if we really came to, where we said, well, we'll try it this way. I think the majority of council, and then you get that, right? I don't think we were all on the same page last year.
So how, uh, did, last year, did we see those businesses taking care of that sidewalk, uh, by the street? Uh, if they're, you, you know, there's quite a few with a parking lot in between the business and the street. Did we see them, uh, managing that, or was it kind of hit and miss? Um, and I'll tell you, from what I saw, it was pretty hit and miss.
I think with, uh, jumping in halfway through the season, there, there was a little bit of miscommunication. Um, there were some people who, who jumped on it pretty quick, some people who, who didn't. So it was kind of hit and miss, but started getting progressively better as the season did go.
So what's, uh, wh- what's your opinion, Nick? If we, if we back up here and say, okay, uh, we'll take on the sidewalks, um, that aren't directly in front of the businesses, um, what kind of effect do you think that will have on your operations? How big, uh, a chunk is that for, an additional chunk is that for you to, for you to take on? And, and, and I'll just qualify that, because I, I, at the time, I was, I questioned, uh, that expectation that we had, that, that businesses would take care of every piece of sidewalk that was kind of connected or close to their business. Um, because at the time, that would have included the, the ends of the, of the parking lot, where, you, you know, Dodson Plaza and stuff, uh, anything, we said, anything connected to that or on that property. Um, and yeah, that's a, that's a pretty big ask from businesses, but it's also a pretty big chunk for us to take on, so.
Right, yeah, and, and, um, I guess, going back to the, to the, uh, original question there. Just trying to think in my head. So obviously, kind of, uh, as we spoke, some of those sidewalks are fairly close to those, those businesses. So, um, some that border the parking lot, um, it, it, it is a decent chunk. Um, it's obviously a little bit more manageable than, than the entire thing. Um, we removed about twelve kilometers of, of stuff that we did. So it, it's given us a chance to jump to our recreation and, and make some of those, uh, some of those, um, relationships with, uh, like, the outdoor, uh, the ice with, uh, volunteers. Um, it's, it's obviously manageable, um, but just where, where are we taking from?
We're gonna have to take away from somewhere to, to find the hours to cover that. So I guess that's the, that's the question we need to look at again. Is, 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 do we, do we still feel that those, those businesses should be responsible for that? Do we start, you know, chipping away at, well, this is, this is far enough away from the business that we should take care of it? I, I, I think we need, we need some consistency as, 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 as far as what we're gonna do and, and what we're not gonna do. Because I, I thought we had a lot of areas last year that hadn't been cleared. I thought, uh, uh, along Fifty-Fifth, heading down towards the, uh, heading west towards the highway, I thought last year there was a lot of big chunks down there that were, that, that I didn't see were cleared much at all, uh, in front of those businesses that have a, a walkway or a sidewalk in front of them, but then the sidewalk is on the other side of their parking lot. So, uh, I think that's the question we gotta look at. Uh, do we still, as last year, feel they're responsible for it? Or are we gonna take those back and, uh, take that on? And then, uh, of course, the, the downtown question, all those sidewalks are right in front of the businesses. But of course, you've heard there's issues with, they, they throw it on the road, and then all their customers are walking through the, the, the snow that's sitting on the road. Um, I don't know if we can answer that today, or if we try and get some more information from administration. But, you know, we gotta, we, we, we gotta make it clear and, and make a decision before we're, or we're dealing with snow, so these folks know what they're dealing with and what they gotta do to get ready for it. Um, I'm of the mind that, you know, I just think it's a lot to, to ask businesses to do, uh, both in front of their business and then go out to the street across the parking lot and, and clear those. It's, is it doable for them? Sure. Uh, an additional cost and, but it's, it's still, it's, it's a lot, especially if we're, if we're saying it's, it's not just right in front of your business, but anything connected to that, to that property. Because then, then we need to go to the property owner themselves, and, and we're, we're then dealing with different chunks, right? You know, the IGA has to take care of the chunk in front of the IGA. The drugstore needs to take care of that chunk across the parking lot in front of the drugstore. Or is the, the property owner itself, uh, is that entity responsible for the entire, for the entire thing? So it gets a little, a little complicated there, uh, once we go beyond what's right in front of the businesses. So, uh, discussion we, we're gonna have to have and, and kind of give these folks some clear direction on where they're going once the snow flies.
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Van Claveren?
Um, thank you for that mayor and, and word here. Uh, yeah, most of it's said, of course, by Counselor Evans already, so just wanna reiterate, yes, we need a direction right now. Uh, the option one gives us the, let's say, the standard, what we currently do with all the other businesses as well. Uh, option two would be a deviation for that for, uh, three nights. And that would for sure start a discussion, of course. Uh, we can always have the discussion back in council. Um, yes, this whole started, of course, with the, uh, workload on the department, so that was answered already as well. And with the start of that was the, uh, uh, ability to make snow clearing possible and then the spread load of work on the recreation facility. So that was the start, of course, of the discussion, uh, let's say, a year ago or over a year ago. I wanted to just remind everybody to that. Um, if there's any questions maybe, uh, for enforcement and, and how much problems or not we encountered as well, uh, Cody could, uh, jump in here as well as peace officer. He has information, only if council wants to hear from him too. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Counselor Valles, do you have a question?
Thank you. So when you're looking down where ACR is and Mr. Mike's and Biocomposite Group, who's doing that sidewalk?
Uh, that's part of our trail network, so that's our responsibility.
That's part of our trail, so you consider that the trail network?
Correct, yes.
And on the other side as well?
Uh.
Well, but by secures, is there not a sidewalk there?
No, there's not.
There's, there's no walk there?
No, it's a, it's a two-point-five meter asphalt trail.
So maybe we should declare it Three Nights a trail?
Uh, you know, I, yeah, yeah. Going back to before we made this decision, I think that we did do the snow removal, Fifty-Fifth, Fifty-Fifth, and all of these, like, when you talk about manpower, right? So I think it came to stop doing Fifty-First, just the downtown businesses, and then it's expanded. So just keep in mind that I'm not speaking for Public Works, but we used to do everything, right? So we've eliminated the downtown, plus we've kind of eliminated a little bit more, so just keep that in mind. Counselor Kamana?
Yeah, I appreciate the, the, all the discussion that we have. What I'm struggling is, like I said. I said, you know, picking and choosing what we're gonna do, right? Because if that's the, I guess, the direction that we're giving the Public Works, then not only that, there's independent, there's IGA, there's all the other businesses who have their sidewalk in front of their building, as well as sidewalk on the street itself, right? And there's many other businesses have the same thing. Any business development, that's the case. They will have their own sidewalk in front of their business, and then there's parking, and then there's this sidewalk, and then the street, right? So are we gonna take on all of that? Because if we start somewhere, then we have to expand all of that as well. So again, I would like, myself would treat this as a full package, whether we do it or whether we don't, right? Not without saying that, you know, we're gonna do this because of this or the other way. And my preference, as one of the councillors who voted against it last year, is hopefully we could discuss how we can go back to where it was before, where I think it's important for us to have the downtown core nice and clean and presentable to anybody who's coming out from the outside of the community, as well as some of the hazards, and also the bigger problem is about enforcement. When there's, it's not being done, how can we enforce it? And as we see last winter, it was a bit of a struggle. I'll leave it at that.
Counselor Evans, did you have something to add?
Quickly. Yeah, I agree. I think we need to keep in mind, though, that our expectations, even if we go to clearing along the edge of our streets, those folks, Three Nights, for example, IGA, whoever, they're all still responsible for clearing that sidewalk in front of their business. And that's what, that's what we've been asking the folks downtown to do. Of course, they're not dealing with a parking lot and then another sidewalk out front. So really, what we have asked of the downtown businesses is that they complete the same chore as the other businesses. And to me, the question is whether we leave the sidewalk along the street to that business, or whether we take it on ourselves. And depending on how much success we had, I'd be in support of looking at, taking that on ourselves and giving that information to administration and giving that consideration of budget time, if that's gonna adjust their budget and their requirements to add that back on. Thanks.
Fair enough. And yeah, and that's the thing is that, you know, we're, some of us are requesting a fuller conversation, but I think that's what is, the conversation is today, we need to get ahead of it. Snow could be coming soon, or it could be coming in a couple of months. So, you know, the sooner we make a decision, the easier it is for our Public Works to know what direction they're going. So if there's any other information that anybody is requiring, speak now, so we can request that information. Otherwise, I think we need to decide on which way we want to go today, so then we can get moving on that. We know what the budget implication is, and then they have a clear direction on which way to go. Counselor Sheriffs?
Just one question. I'm trying to look at all the maps and there are just so many, I'm not even sure which one I'm talking about. So just to clarify, we are talking about clearing the sidewalk along Three Nights, the east side of the road. Are we currently doing the west side of that same portion?
Nope. They, I guess, I guess we keep mentioning business owners, but it's private property, I guess, is the ultimate thing here, right?
We've asked them to do it.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. So yeah, right adjacent to our main road is we're asking the businesses. So they'd be doing, I guess, a double snow removal. They'd be doing in front of their business, then in front of the parking lot as well. So think of Three Nights, think of Three Nights the Safety, Beyond Beauty, IGA, Dodson Plaza. I think the same would be like in front of ACR, Wendy's, going down and things like that. We're doing, where we did all that before, right? We did 50th and 50th, right? So the question today is, do we leave it the way that it is, or do we say, you know what, we feel those are our responsibilities, so we're gonna do that, and then the businesses are responsible for doing just the front-facing of their business, right?
Because I think that if we decide to go with the west side, we know what's next, right? The east side of the road is gonna come. So are we just going to decide, are we just gonna do the 50th and 50th, 50th Avenue, 50th Street, all the way up and all the way down, both sides? Might as well, because it's just gonna come back.
Yeah, I'm with you on that, too.
Yeah.
Is just go straight down 50th, straight down 50th, and if, and you're responsible. I think of, just because I imagine that experience as a customer going into a business, as I'm driving my vehicle, you know, I go to the parking lot and I'm hoping that the parking lot is cleared for snow, you know, and that I'm able to get out of my car. If I've got to walk through a little bit of snow, it's fine, but then now to walk into the business, I'm thinking of IGA, you know, I would expect that in front of IGA before I get to those doors, or in front of Three Nights, that the business is responsible for that. And then if I'm out now walking, as I get onto, I look at, view them as public sidewalks, right? Adjacent between the parking lot and the street, I look at that as, I look at that as the municipal, municipality's responsibility, right? If I'm now walking from here to the school or to 7-Eleven, that that would be cleared, rather than putting it on the business owner. So I'm in support of us doing down 50th and 50th, and then making it clear to go out that businesses are responsible for snow removal right in front of their businesses.
I add just a little bit
Oh, sure.
to that as well. So when we talk about 50th and 50th, when we start looking at the east, the majority of it is homeowners and households, is that something that you're, are we just talking about businesses, or are we like homeowners talk after the sidewalk in front of their property, like the rest of the town?
Yeah. So for myself, I think residential is separate. I think this is for businesses. I live, where I live, I live in a cul-de-sac, and I am responsible for clearing my driveway and in front, the portion of sidewalk. I think it's always been that way in front of my house, right? And so I would expect for all residents that it follows suit, right? Unless you're a business. I would say this is a business discussion, so I guess it wouldn't be so much in front of 50th all the way down. It would be 50th, north to south, and then heading west, and then ensuring our schools, our hospitals, or our, like hospitals and things like that are still municipal buildings that are cleared, and that as well. That's for me, so I'm not sure how everybody else feels. I will go with Counselor Evans. We'll make our way around and see where we land. Hans, did you want to add something before we get going?
Perhaps, yes. And with this discussion, thank you for that. It's clear that a motion, maybe if it's too broad for us, if it's another motion than the two in front of you, or a motion to bring it back for another decision, if it's right now at the spot, it might be convoluted when it's, let's say, very encompassing and vague, like at 50th and 50th.
Yeah.
You heard that already. So I propose that if it's not one of those two motions, and of course, not the third one, to take for information, because then nothing happens, that council could consider bringing this back as soon as we can, for a decision that describes what council is looking for right now, what we get from this discussion. Because what I get from this discussion is that neither option one or option two might be brought forward right now as a, for decision item. So I urge that maybe we take this back and make sure that we propose a correct wording of a motion for the snow removal, because it might be too much impacting that we don't consider.
Okay, thank you for that. I think I still will maybe just kind of get a little bit of opinions, because maybe there is, for councillors today, they're saying, I'm going with option one. Counselor Evans?
Yeah, I think we need to be realistic in our expectations and look at covering those sidewalks, you know, out from businesses, along their parking lot. And I'm sure that there's a few that are not on 50th and 50th, maybe. A couple of stragglers that maybe we might have to add into the map. You guys can look at that when you get going. I was just, I was curious about the timing of the snow clearing we do downtown. You know, it seems like the biggest concern is people are shoveling there. There's snow out in front of their businesses, and then it ends up on the street, and then people are walking through it, parking in it, et cetera. And I'm not sure if there's a way to, you know, let those folks downtown know, okay, we're gonna be coming through at this time. So have your, have your snow cleared, shoveled onto the, to the, to the street by this time, and we're gonna go through and clean it all up. And if you're not, if you don't get it on there by that time, then it's gonna get left.
Like to remove it, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. Because I believe we go downtown quite early, do we not? Or even in the middle of the night sometimes, just to make sure that gets done. So then we'll clear it, and then people will clear their sidewalks and just throw it on to the newly cleared section already. I don't know if there's a way that we can adjust that timing, that we can say, okay, we're, if we get snow, we're gonna do downtown at like nine o'clock in the morning or something. You know, we'll, we'll end up, it'll be a pain, because nobody can get in there for that 45 minutes or whatever to blade that, the street all the way to the end. But what we would do was, we would capture the snow that comes off of the sidewalk. So I'm not suggesting that that's what we do, but if we can look at that and see if there's an option, so those folks clear their sidewalks, we come along, we take all the snow, and away we go. Again, I know that's challenging. It's nice when you go in there in the middle of the night, or three in the morning, whatever it is, there's no cars, there's no nothing. But it seems like that's the concern from the businesses, is they're okay with clearing it, but they gotta drop it right where their customers are parking and walking, I think.
Yeah, and that was the thing is that, and I mean, maybe it's not daily, like depending on the amount of snow, because it's like, if you only have this amount of snow, like to step over it out of your car isn't a lot, but you know, when it starts to get quite high, and then you're expecting, you know, so, you know, maybe that's something that we have to work on, whatever, so many days at this amount of snowfall, or once a week that gets cleared out of there, right? At the end of the day, Friday, or beginning of morning, or something, right? Just so it's not growing or accumulating over. Yeah. Just simple, yeah. Something like that. So if anybody else, kind of what they're wanting to add or see to this, before, or you're wanting to make a motion?
No, I'll make a motion. I just have a concern with 50th and 50th. You have your downtown core who are going to have to do their sidewalks. But you go 50th West, you've got a lot of businesses down that way, but they're gonna go and get theirs done.
But their which?
They're gonna get their sidewalks done. No, they're gonna get their sidewalks done, and their property abuts to the town, to the sidewalk. So I can see us getting some complaints about that, where 50th businesses downtown are getting their sidewalks done, or 50th West is getting her down, done, but downtown, you're making us do. You know, like there's B&amp;B Liquor Store, there's, well, T-Gam, I-T. You know, there's a bunch of businesses down there, and I just don't find that fair. I don't find that right. Either we do them all, or we don't do any.
You have a rebuttal?
Yeah, but the vast majority of those businesses have walkways, et cetera, attached to their business right in front of them, and then the sidewalk is out on the, on the road across from their parking lot. No?
I agree. There isn't one single business that won't have to do something.
Right against the road like downtown on 50th. We've got a sidewalk, yes. And they've got, and they've got walks right in front of their buildings, the same as, the same as the other businesses do.
Counselor Sheriffs?
It's only been two years, but I have learned that we will not make everybody happy, and somebody will always have an issue with whatever we decide. So whether we decide one way or another, somebody's gonna complain about something. So we just need to decide and just deal with the complaints, I guess.
Yeah, and we're also seven councillors who are gonna have different opinions. I think that what the collective minds are saying this morning is that, take it back, like Hans suggested, option one or three is not what I would say that any of us were interested in. We'd like to see a little bit more, and then once it comes back, we can have further debate on that and decide what direction that will, or that will go in. You did have your hand up there that you wanted to add something, so if you want to go ahead, Nick?
Yes, it was actually just to Counselor Evans, well, what he was speaking on with the downtown, just to add, we do like a midnight run, and then typically, the way this removal looks downtown, with them shoveling it, was pretty much identical to what we do. Our trigger point for parks is quite small, so we're there a lot more than Public Works is and coming to pick it up. So we have no place either to put it, so we throw it right on the road. So I think with that, it would just be a little better communication with Public Works, or whoever's doing the midnight run, to say, hey, give us a show, we'll come up, you clear it, and we'll just kick it on for you, whatever's on the side.
So you're suggesting that you, that we take on that, the sidewalk again, and then work with Public Works to clear the street?
No, what I'm suggesting is, when they clear the sneak, the snow, and some of it falls back on after it's been cleared, that we could just kick that edge back off. I'm not sure if that's what the concerns are.
Work together, get that off the sidewalks, then it helps the businesses.
Yeah, yes, but they still maintain the sidewalk.
I would, I would suggest if administration brings back some options and attach costs to, if we, if we take on what we're calling 50th and 50th, which is the businesses which have a sidewalk on the other side of their parking lots, and if we add in the downtown businesses, that we just, we take that on as well. And again, work with Public Works, if it's parks that would do those sidewalks, do it at the same time. You kick the snow off the sidewalk onto the road, Public Works comes through, clears the road, and then it's, it's all pretty much, pretty much taken care of, and you can, you can clean up those bits and pieces that fall back onto the sidewalk. Would that be reasonable, if we get a couple of options, if we do this, if we do this, these are the costs associated with that, when they, when they bring back the options? Because it seems like some want the downtown done, some don't.
Well, I think if we come back to, we know that we're not leaning towards other option one or two, so I think administration has kind of captured our comments since concerns here today, and if they come back with maybe a couple suggestions, and then that way, if there's some altering of the motion, or, you know, with the exception of that, it makes it a lot easier, because we're not gonna get it 100%. You know, today anyways, there's going to be somebody that's gonna vote against no matter what comes, you know, or might not want to see it a certain way, or there might be a motion there that with an addition of, you know, including this street or something as well. So I think if they can capture it, like you said, and then have some costs associated with that, I think then that's a good start for us. And if we can, you know, get that the sooner, sooner, you know, then it is better, right?
Yeah, thank you. I think we do have enough information. So just as, like you said, if you want it very soon, of course, the information might be a little bit less, but that might help us, of course, in the, before the snow flies. If we are going to make an in-depth and a big analysis with a lot of options, of course, we might not hit the snow before it flies, and then we will deal with how we have currently, of course, our information and our policy out. So if you want it ASAP, we can look into that. It will be maybe a little bit less information, but for sure, we can bring it back. And till that moment, we are working, of course, with what we have already without any change.
Okay. And then to keep in mind, too, that whatever decision we make, we want to make sure that we're communicating to all the businesses and in the community, hopefully ahead of the snowfall, and then so there's clear direction this year, when the snow hits, for sure. So what we are probably needing today is we're needing a motion from one of the councillors to direct administration to gather further information with a different motion and bring it back to council. So if there's a member of council that would like to make a motion? Counselor Ballas, did you have your hand up? Counselor Evans?
I'll make the motion that administration, um, bring back a, a report with additional options for snow removal. Um, yeah, I don't think I need to get any more specific. Add, yeah, add a future council meeting.
Okay, perfect. Did you get that, Pam? Okay, wonderful.
And it's pretty clear sort of what we're looking at, we want to address? Okay.
Uh, any comment, question or debate on the motion? Uh, if none, then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much for that. And sorry that we didn't get any further down the road, but hopefully we get it next time. And it is a lunchtime, uh, so we will, uh, call a break for lunch and then we will reconvene at one? Okay, 1:00 PM for the rest of our decision items and into department and council reports then, or agenda. We just moved, um, out of closed. We don't have any motions, right? There was nothing that happened in closed, right? No motions? It was only two minutes ago. Shall we know? We didn't have any motions coming out of closed, right, Hans? I think there was just the, uh, there was just the addition to the information item that we received in closed.
That's right. And that would be, uh, when the, uh, information items are taken, taken at the end of the meeting. Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Um, and then we'll jump back into our decision items. We have, uh, nine point four partnership with DVCF for street sign naming rights.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, and through to the rest of council. So the Drayton Valley Community Foundation attended the growth and ad hoc meeting in September thirteenth last week. And they brought a proposal to start an endowment fund for the town of Drayton Valley that supports, uh, local project initiatives. So this endowment fund belongs, of course, then to the, uh, town of Drayton Valley. And they will get determined how it's going to be spent in direct collaboration with the, uh, Drayton Valley Community Foundation itself and the town. So in collaboration, uh, when this could be established, of course, the interest from this fund would be then utilized for projects that benefits the, uh, life and the quality of life of our residents. This means that it's going to be together formed and that will take, of course, some direction from council at this moment to start that process. So the name, uh, naming rights for our streets, and of course, we have a system in, uh, Drayton Valley already, that, uh, commemorative purposes, uh, streets can be addressed with an additional name for that purpose. And it's already established in our, uh, regulations and policy naming, uh, of municipal assets. A dash zero one dash sixteen. That's possible to, uh, utilize that. That means that our street names will not be changing for postal codes and, uh, I mean, our postal services, uh, of course, but will bury the, carry the names of commemorative, uh, namings that are proposed through this, uh, uh, project. Those funds that, uh, then will be generated will be made to be, uh, possible to put in this endowment fund. And, um, this means that the community foundation will take on the majority of that operation. But of course, the town of Drayton Valley and us as administration will be still part of all the, uh, other implications. So legal, uh, risks, we will talk, of course, with our legal team and advisement how this, uh, uh, agreement would be set up. And, uh, as I said, that would be the direction that we ask from council. The council direct administration to enter into an agreement with the Drayton Valley Community Foundation for the Street Naming Rights Initiative. This means that, uh, we will start a process of how that agreement would look like and have lots of conversations and probably, uh, keeping council informed in which direction that is going, um, when we are talking around the table. With that, are there any questions?
Perfect. Thank you for that. I'll open it up for questions. Counselor Ballas?
I think, uh, Counselor Clark also mentioned trail, trails last time as well. And I thought there was some interest. I'm just wondering if we should say streaks and trails.
So, and I think there was benches too. So I think we're working out the logistics as we go or?
Um, yeah, that could be, of course, uh, when we start this process, uh, as you see, street naming rights, we can include that while we are sitting around the table, uh, with each other to make this agreement, what to be included. Uh, as I said, the policy is a policy that's called the municipal assets, uh, naming policy. That's wider, of course, because that talks also about parks. Um, but for sure, that policy has to be part of, of the conversations around the table. But in this case, uh, when you give the, uh, direction basically to look at street naming rights, we can include what we know around the table of, like you said, uh, trails slash. Sorry, the third was, I didn't hear that.
Benches, there was benches. And there was a few other things, I think, like this, the motion today is just asking that we move into or enter into agreement with DVCS. And then there was a conversation around like kind of what the logistics of that would all look like. Um, yeah, trails, benches, things like that. We'd want to ensure that, you know, um, the design and everything that was approved by the town, that the conditions like with the naming rights, same with, you know, all sorts. There's lots that we still have to work out. Today is just about, um, getting administration to, uh, get that agreement in place. And then we can be kind of working out what the expectations are, exactly how it all, um, will kind of roll out going forward. Any other questions? Is there a member of, okay, go ahead, Colin?
Like, do we, or, or we're saying we want administration to enter into an agreement? Or do we want administration to develop an agreement and have one kind of in hand to, like, do we want council to review it, I guess, is the question I have for council?
You could put that as in your motion if you want to make a motion. Okay, you make a motion.
All right, I will move the council direct administration to draft an agreement with DVCF for the Street Naming Rights Initiative for review by council.
Perfect. Any comment, question, uh, debate on the motion? Uh, I just make the comment that, uh, yeah, we had the opportunity to sit down with Drayton Valley Community Foundation at a economic development ad hoc meeting. And this sounds like an exciting, uh, project to get into with community foundation. It's ones that, um, we'll see a return, come back to that quality of life for, uh, the community like Hans had mentioned. I know that, uh, part of our strategic plan is beautification. And we had looked at metal signs, putting them, you know, replacing some of our old banners and things like that. And there was, you know, quite a cost. So we looked at how we were going to do that and what that would look like. So I think that this just helps, you know, move that project forward with us to have another organization kind of take it over, facilitate it. And they were feeling confident that they'd be able to go out and get the sponsors and, you know, start, um, celebrating and beautifying the community. So yeah, I think it's a great project. And if there is no other comments, then I, there is a motion on the table to proceed forward with the draft of an agreement and come back to council. And I will ask all in favor. And that is carried. Perfect. We'll keep moving along. Our next decision item is nine point five. This is the Drayton Valley marketing campaign.
Thank you, Mayor, and through to the rest of council. So the Drayton Valley Community Foundation, uh, at that meeting of September thirteenth, uh, also presented the, uh, Drayton Valley. Uh, this is Drayton Valley digital marketing. Uh, that's a process that's already, of course, in place, but they had additional information that they shared at that moment. And they presented the marketing budget breakdown. With that, uh, there is an additional monetary question from, uh, the Drayton Valley Foundation to continue this, uh, process of marketing our community with this campaign to the outside world and making sure that, uh, us as a community, of course, with all our opportunities, uh, are on the map, basically. The additional cost has been, has been calculated and you see that in the proposal, it's for the rest of the year, so September to December twenty twenty-three. Because in the budget time and deliberations that we will enter into for twenty twenty-four, the new proposal will come at that moment as well for additional funds to, uh, keep, uh, supporting this project that they, uh, uh, put on for us. So the recommendation is that council approve the cost of fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollar for the monthly maintenance service for the This Is Drayton Valley campaign from September to December twenty twenty-three. And with that, any questions?
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Any, uh, questions for administration? Bill, did you have a question? I can just tell by the look on your face.
No, I, I don't, not at this time. The rest of the proposal would be discussed at, uh, for budget and also depending on what county's participation is going to be.
Yeah, that's right. So again, Drayton Valley Community Foundation came and, uh, presented at an ad hoc, uh, economic development meeting. This is just for people that are online. And, uh, there was a proposal made to us and this was, I guess, what had came out of that meeting is that we would bring to council the consideration of the maintenance cost for what the ask was. There was a larger ask to fund, uh, this project going ahead in collaboration with Russell County and Drayton Valley hospitality and tourism. So yeah, I think once those, um, presentations were given to both of those, then it would come back and help us with that budget decision. Because that was, I think, about a hundred thousand dollar price tag for that ask to further this campaign. So this is just that maintenance.
So therefore I will make a motion that council approve the cost of fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for the monthly maintenance services for the Drayton or the This Is Drayton Valley campaign from September to December twenty twenty-three.
Good job. All I have to say is you guys have really stepped it up on this side of council today. I'm like, I am, I am, I don't even, I haven't even turned my head. I've just been this way today. So I want to just say to the three of you, I really appreciate you guys, the sleep you got last night, the, the involvement today, the, how eager you are to make these motions. Fantastic. Uh, Amila was trying to beat you to that, I think, Bill. So that's why I was like, wow, you guys are just, you guys are just on the ball over here. Um, there is a motion on the table. Is there any comment, question or debate on that? Amila, did you, you wanted to make the motion? You didn't have a question, right? Wow. That's funny. Um, just for me, um, I know I struggle with this one just a little bit because, uh, I just, I, I think the campaign This Is Drayton Valley is a fantastic campaign. I think the videos are fantastic. I think the way that they were able to reach across all of Canada and everywhere and really highlight and showcase Drayton Valley was fabulous. Great videos, great everything. Um, I think for me, it's just, there is a cost going forward with this. We did put in seventy-five thousand dollars previously along with our other partners. And so the life of that kind of campaign, we've got to where it is. And now in order to move it forward, there's got to be money invested. So for me, I just, I struggle a little bit because I think that there is value in it. I do look at other means of marketing in our community, our local and, and what, you know, what, I guess I, I struggle of what council and is trying to get out of this, right? Like, I look at our strategic plan and I look at, you know, if this is looking at economic growth and, and retention, then, you know, I can get behind it, but I'd like to have control over it. And I think, you know, that was one of the things for me, we'll talk about it more, as Bill said, at future council, um, is how much control we have, what we put into it, if we put into it. And I know one of the things, um, maybe for this, Hans, if this motion is passed and part of it today, we did have, um, there was a couple of requests there that we would, if we could get a video in the fall, because the, the colors were, as part of this, were really nice right now. So they had talked about that. So we needed an answer on that. And if we could have a say in what that was, because we had suggested, what did we suggest again? We could suggest it, yeah, disc golf, capturing the disc golf, capturing our facilities, our education. What else? Was there something else that, just because we wanted to be able to, the pool, oh, maybe it was the pool, CTC, um, that we would like an answer back, that if we could have a little bit more control over that maintenance cost. Um, and as Hans said, this is just till the end of the year. And then the rest of that conversation will come for budget discussion for the larger piece. Um, and with that being said, if there's no other comment, question or debate, then I will ask, um, all in favor, all opposed, and that is carried. Yeah, I'm sorry. Like I said, I struggle. It's, I guess I'll have a more conversation with, um, with it during, like I said, I think it's fantastic. I just, you know, we have a lot that's coming to us during budget and we have a lot to where our dollars are. And if we say yes to everything, then I guess we'll look at it more when it comes for budget discussion. And then we have one other decision item. That is Ms. Terry. That was our addition, which was the, um, electronic sign proposal. Is that right? I've got like so much of a mess here. I'm like.
Uh, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of council. Um, so a little bit of proposal and background. Um, during the twenty twenty-three budget deliberation, the town of Drayton Valley approved a budget for a Wayfinder sign and a Welcome to Town of Drayton Valley sign to be placed at Fiftieth Street and Highway twenty-two intersection.
It was an addition. Do you guys got it?
Yeah.
Uh, the budgeted amount allocated for both of these projects was a hundred and ten thousand with twenty-five thousand needing to come from donations for the Wayfinder sign. This project was to enhance the appearance of this town entrance. On July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, administration brought, uh, design and location concept for council to council for decision. It was decided to get prices on constructing the sign on the southeast corner of the intersection at Highway twenty-two and Fiftieth Ave by McDonald's. Administration has gathered cost of constructing the sign with consideration of a bigger display screen landscaping costs and power installation and belows the, the cost breakdown. So for option one, with the smaller screen, the one that they proposed, it's a hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and eighty plus GST for that sign. Um, and with all of the, um, landscaping, um, the total cost came, and electrical, sorry, the total cost for that came to two hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine ninety-five. For option two, with the sign having a bigger display screen, the cost of just the sign was a hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty plus GST. Um, and with all the landscaping work, which is the same as option one, that cost, total cost came to two hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine ninety-five. Administration is looking for council's input on the direction they would like administration to take on this project. Administration feels it would be best if this project was brought back to council consideration during the twenty twenty-four budget process. So that's the recommendation. So the financial implication is, um, we would need an additional for option one, we need an additional a hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine to have this, this project go forward, that project go forward. Or for option two, it'd be an additional two hundred thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine ninety-five. Um, yeah, so our recommendation that council approve this as information with the recommendation that council or administration bring the item back to the twenty twenty-four budget deliberation process for consideration.
Thank you very much for that. Uh, remind me again, who presented the signs?
Blanchett.
Blanchett.
Yeah, and I do believe I have their proposal at the back um, with the two options for the display screen smaller and bigger.
Pictures. I'm just trying to remember. They came to a council, not an economic, they came to a council meeting, right?
Yep, for delegation.
For a delegation, okay. Hello presentation, yeah. Yeah, interpretive dance. Okay, I'm going to open it up for questions. I'm going to go to Counselor Evans first.
Not a question, just a statement. I think this is, uh, much too much money for this sign. I'd like us to, uh, reconsider other less costly options. I don't think, in my opinion, this is viable at these kind of dollars.
Thank you for that.
And I'll make a motion as such if you would like.
Well, you're going to have to beat out everyone else unless you want to make them. Uh, I'm going to go to Counselor Ballas. He wasn't here for the first initial discussions of these, uh, of this.
And I totally agree with, uh, Counselor Evans. And I also think that we should reconsider location.
What were you thinking?
Um, that we should reconsider location.
Oh, thank you.
So maybe we could bring a couple of different options back, um, budget and see what your guys' thoughts are, but.
Okay, um, so, uh, any other questions? If there's not, then I'm needing a, a member of council to make a motion. And I think that that member of council is going to be?
Drumroll.
Drumroll. I think I'm going to go with Counselor Ballas just because they're really stepping it up.
Are you ready?
I know, right?
I move council accepts the report as information only.
Perfect. And then we can see it on the, as a budget item when we start those discussions. Okay, any comment, question or debate on that motion? None, then I will ask all in favor. That is carried. And we've already had our, um, closed item discussion and that is it for our decision items. We only have a little bit of time. We're jumping into another meeting here at three o'clock. So we have our 10.1 as our growth services. I think that I'm going to ask Kundi to come because this is your first time presenting your report. Okay, maybe I'll ask you to quickly come down and you want to present your report just because it is your first time. Whether we ask questions or not, we'll let you, let you do a trial run with us. We'll go easy on you because we know we're pressed for time.
Thank you for having me here today, just presenting on the department report. Looking over the economic development highlights, three things really stood to mind. The first is the labor market industry gap analysis and education needs assessment. So with this project, we follow our kickoff meeting last week with KPMG, who are now in the process of drafting a project charter and stakeholder engagement plan to submit for review by end of the week. And moving forward, we have the rural nourishing program. So the program remains very active. As we have received four new applications this week alone totaling around 111 employee applications that were received thus far in the program. Also, Clearpoint is another interesting project we're a part of that has to do with strategy automation platform, basically helping us to track our initiatives when it comes to economic development and to help to report on those initiatives so that council can be up to date on them. So we have begun talks with Clearpoint on the creation of a work plan using that platform. It's the easiest way to sort of keep council up to date on what we're doing. Now, when it comes to the energy highlights, so the clean energy improvement program is something we've been working on right now. I had a meeting last week with Luke just to get an update on that. So he did mention that Alberta municipalities has been diligently working towards a standard operation procedure for this program. And the hope is we, we will be able to finalize this SOP by the end of this year to fully initiate the program in 2024. So in the meantime, we're just sort of going back and forth with them and having some meetings and discussions on how to proceed with that. We also have the eVenture Northwest Alberta program. So with this program, I'm not too sure if council's up to date on what had been going on. This was something Luke had been working on prior to him leaving. So for this program, it was through the Community Energy Association in partnership with Adco. They were basically looking for a partnership with municipalities in central and northern Alberta to build, construct and operate electric vehicle charging stations. So here in Drayton Valley, we're part of those conversations and they actually came for a side visit and they looked at the downtown parking lots at 511752 Avenue. And so for that site, they looked at, they wanted it, Adco wanted it, and they wanted to put an electric vehicle charging station there. And so I did discuss other alternative sites with Luke, but I'm not too sure if Adco would approve those other sites. So that will be a conversation to have to sort of see if other sites were considered apart from just the one that were presented. So moving forward from there, we have the education aspect of stuff. And so as of right now, just as a high level update, so we have posted the education consortium coordinator position and we are receiving applications continually and reviewing them to sort of make a decision on how to proceed with that. When, when it comes to the zero fee tuition program, to date, we dispersed around $4,256 for the winter 2024 term. And currently we have four students registered for the University of Alberta Faculty of Extension and the Northern Lakes College programs. And that's all I have for today.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your report. I'd like to say, are there any questions? But I'm going to push along to our next report just because we have a meeting and they're going to be coming online. So thank you very much for, no, we're not going to ignore Bill and we're going to go right to yours, Hans. Bill doesn't even know his mic is on, so. Thank you very much, Kundi. So Hans, for, I guess we're going to municipal service department report. I'm sorry. Yeah. And maybe what we're going to do is just maybe an update on 50th. And then if there's anything particular that sticks out for council, just put your hand up while Shelley's walking. We try to save time.
Good afternoon again.
Good afternoon.
Okay, so for the 50th Ave project, as you can all see, it's well underway. The fight, the following items are being completed currently is a concrete curb and gutter has been installed on the north side of 50th Ave. Ave and curb and gutter work will be starting on the south side of 50th Ave on September 14th, but it has already started because when I had to get the report in, there's a kind of a gap there. All subgrade work has been completed in preparation for paving. Additional backfill work along new curb and gutter was, will be completed on September 23rd. Landscaping work on the green space around the boulevards, dates has not been yet determined. And thermal painting will be completed on the portion of the new pavement once paving has been completed. And they're looking at paving starting Tuesday of next week and hopefully being completed in a week's time, including the, I said, I think I said superficial, but I meant sacrificial patches. That'll be gone on, on all the infrastructure work that's going on right now. The stormwater at Beckett Road and 50th Ave, a new manhole was installed at this location as well as it has been upsized to increase the amount of stormwater it can receive. A sacrificial asphalt patch will be done once the paving crew is in. 43rd Street and 50th Ave underground storm water infrastructure work has been completed in this location. And a sacrificial asphalt patch will be done once, once they come to site. All sanitary sewer crossing replacements are expected to be completed by September 20th. I believe those are all completed now. And they are working on the final piece, which is the stormwater extension on 40, between 43rd and 45th. And that is expected to be completed by Friday, Saturday. Then the paving crew will move in on Tuesday and, and they'll be able to kind of hit the whole thing at once and get the paving done. Expected date of completion, there, our expected date is October 31st, but it's looking like will probably be completed by October 18th, around that, that timeframe.
Perfect. Any questions? Quick questions. Monica?
Not even a question. I was wondering if from number two, pretty much 50th Avenue construction underway, if you can just pretty much copy and paste and send it to Jennifer Stone and we can communicate that with public.
Sure. Yeah, we'll just update our post on that one.
Yeah.
For the, the closure right now that's going on for the storm extension?
Yeah, sure. Perfect.
Quickly, I'm just going to repeat what I said before about the post, you know, if you could, there were some questions from the community about the progress. Would you be able to, you know, work with Jenny maybe and just put a post out?
Yeah, we, we've been putting the post out and updating it and it kind of is just a broad post of like, there's going to be detours within these areas. So expect delays and possible road closures because trying to schedule everything with the construction, depending on weather, it's, it's pretty difficult to keep it really up to date. So we kind of just made a broad post about this is the work that's going to be completed. So expect delays in the area, but we can absolutely provide another update on kind of what we've talked about today and.
Right. And a little bit of, I know, I understand that, you know, can't give specifics, but maybe a little bit of a timeline as well.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Just that comms piece. Okay. Thank you very much for that.
Can I just add one more thing?
Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to give an update on the Sager pilot for the wastewater technology.
Okay.
We did our first round of samples for the Sager. Our effluent numbers for our total ammonias, these are the, the targets. We're trying to bring those numbers down with this pilot. Our effluent coming off of our wastewater, it is 14.3, I believe, milligrams per liter and off of the pilot is actually point zero two zero now.
Oh, wow.
So it's a significant drop. So the pilot is actually working very, very well. I'm quite pleased. And it was not even a week worth of it being in operation that we were seeing these numbers. So I can expect to see further decreases in those numbers as well.
That's wonderful. Great. Thank you for that. Yeah.
No more. And we're almost out of that.
That's awesome. Thank you. Okay. And if anybody has any other questions, are you staying for our next meeting?
I wasn't. I can, but I wasn't.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah?
I can.
Okay, maybe, yeah.
Sure.
And if we have any other questions that really stand out, we can always pick your brain quickly after, or we can send an email, just cc all of council if you have any other questions in regards to the report. And then for Hans, for community services and recreation, is there anything that stands out that you kind of want to highlight before we keep pushing through?
Basically, there's nothing really standing out, but I want to express that of course with the Ecoli situation, of course, in Alberta and in Calgary, very unfortunate, that it's very pertinent that parents are anxious with those situations. So we have an in-house food program here. High standard, high level of service that we provide here for our kids internally. But we certainly sympathize with all those parents and the situation that they face around Calgary.
Yes, thank you for that.
So if there's any other questions about the report?
Nope, there's no questions. Thank you for that very much. And yeah, thank you for touching on that. Ms. Stone isn't here to give us our comms report this week as well. So if you do have any questions, you can always send them through an email and follow up and we'll quickly go through Counselor Ballas, starting with your council report, please. You thought we were going to table it?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report?
Starting on the 7th of September, CAO interviews, also on the 8th and the 12th, 13th Growth Services. 19th, we had the Pembina Physicians Recruitment Committee meeting. Again, for budget preparation, there will be a request for $5,000. Also looking for committee members. So if anybody is interested in joining the Pembina Physician Recruitment, certainly would welcome you to our committee.
Okay. And do we help advertise that?
Sorry.
Do we help advertise that with members at large? For the Pembina Physician Recruitment typically? We could? Okay, maybe we could. And then that way we can help maybe push some members there.
Good idea.
Thank you. I got it from you.
That's it.
Thank you very much for that. Counselor Clark?
I don't have much to add other than September 23rd at the Curling Rink, there's going to be an SPG Superfights, I guess. I went to it last time. It was actually a lot of fun. And I think they had something like 300 competitors last time. So you know, probably 1,000 people extra in town.
Yeah.
Weekend, so.
Fantastic.
If you can make it, make it.
Wonderful. That's it. Thank you. Counselor Evans?
Yeah, I'm the same as far as the other councillors there, just with the addition of a sustainability committee meeting. And just a couple of things we covered in there was the we talked about Alberta environment and, and Shelley discussing with them the snow dump area, what the requirements are, and they're kind of working together to, to, to see if it's suitable or if any changes need to be made for it to be acceptable to them. I also suggested that possibly we touch base with administration at the county and look at participating in their toxic waste roundup. Maybe becoming a partner there. Generally 90 to 95% of it is covered through grants. So it's also something maybe we could bring up at the joint council meeting. I just think it's a good idea to get it out there and, and, and get people bringing in that toxic chemicals. Covered lanterns on the pond and what was required there. And last thing I wanted to touch on was, and it's here somewhere. The well, I guess maybe I missed it.
CTC?
The, the CTC was Parks brought forward a proposal to tune up the CTC, create a bit of a trail along the north side of the road there that we've all kind of shown our displeasure there. And they're proposing to put in a couple of pretty significant rows of sunflowers. And, and they'll explain that when they bring that to budget, but the reason is
Nothing? Just go ahead.
The reason is the, the advantage of that is, takes much less labor than than putting in flowers, you know, and all the required weeding and, and upkeep there. And this way, at the end of the year, they mow all those sunflowers down. They re rode it till the material and then they just plant them again the next year. So again, what we're looking at is is enhancing things without adding significant labor to, to keep them up. And around the pond, we're looking at one section right close to the, to the building. That's all grass that will be nicely mowed. And then the other three quarters around that pond, looking at planting wildflowers. It's, it's, it's reasonably cheap. You can get them, the seed in bulk. And that would just kind of improve the, the look of things around there and save us from, again, adding acres of, of grass that we need to try and cut on a slope. So anyway, I suggested that they, they bring it back at, at, at budget time for consideration and you'll see a plan at that point in time.
Perfect. Thank you. Counselor Sheriffs?
So I just wrote down highlights. On September 14th, I went to the Yellowhead, to Edson for Yellowhedge Synergy Group and it was and worked with West Central Airship Society and there was three speakers and honestly, very informative presentation. I absolutely loved it. One of them was from Farmers Property Rights Advocate. It's regarding renewable energy coming and trying to obtain land from farmers or landowners and they help with that process. Another one was the Orphan Well Association. And then Kevin McConan did the West Central Airship Society presentation. And I know we had one here in town a few months ago, but I found Kevin's a lot more informative and I thought it would be very interesting for council, even some high school students or community to come and listen to him and explain why and how they collect data about air quality in our area. And also they are looking for members to sit under a board and they would like somebody from council to be under a board. So that's open. And then on 18th, I had a, a healthy community coalition meeting and I'm just, it was very good. I'm just going to point out two things. So for October 10th, they're planning on mental health fair. And what it is, it's a chili cook-off. So there's going to be a whole bunch of booths with a bunch of people making their own chili and there's going to be prizes for the best chili in town. And it's all dedicated to talk about mental health, especially with men because they don't like talking about it, but they like chili. So hopefully that will draw them in. And also I joined a subcommittee and it's for emergency preparedness, preparedness. So what it is, we have a meeting next week and we will try to make a plan for a presentation what to do in case of emergency during daytime. When the kids are in school, parents can get a hold of the kids, kids can get a hold of their parents, the buses are you know, loaded or not available. And just to come up with a plan what to do in that situation. That's it.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Deputy Mayor Gomana?
Thank you. I'll be quick. 7th, as mentioned, CEO interviews, 7th, 8th. 13th, Growth Services and had the Youth Advisory Committee. They'll be coming to council I believe with the next couple of council meetings and presenting to us what, what they've been doing. One thing that we've been discussing about the skate park jam, how that went well and the involvement of the Youth Advisory Committee. And also they'll be talking about their future plans as well. On the 19th, PPRRC and Health Foundation, Health Foundation went through the budget for this year as well as discussing about the projects that they're going to do at the hospital. And also the progress of some of the projects that they are doing and the challenges as well on some of the project they are doing. That's it for me. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. For myself, yeah, busy agenda again. Agenda setting, we had the economic development ad hoc meeting, homeless discussions, CAO interviews and just preparing for the mayor's gala. And that is it for me. Is there a member of council that would like to accept both? Is there a member of council that would like to accept both the department and the council reports? Information, please. Counselor Clark, thank you very much for that. No council items, council initiated a roundtable. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion for accepting the information items, as well as the information item that we received in closed? Counselor Gomana, thank you very much for that, and we will adjourn our meeting at 2:50, I don't know, all my clocks are different, 9, we'll go with 2:59, just in time for our next meeting. You have one minute, and that is that.